Present in the session hall currently is Senator Rector, Senator Palacios, Senator Respechio, and yourself, Madam Speaker. At the moment, there's no quorum.
Thank you very much. And I ask again, Sergeant Arms, can you please call for the other members to be here this morning? Session was supposed to start at nine o'clock. And I'm going to ask the clerk, can you please again check to see who are in the hall and if we have a quorum?
Currently present in the session hall are Senator Blas, Senator Ogun, Senator Ada, Senator Palacios, Senator Cruz, Senator Respechio, and yourself, Madam Speaker. Two, four, six, seven.
Seven. Oh, Senator Rector was just saying.
He's here. He's here.
He's in the coffee room. Getting coffee.
In the session hall.
Yeah, I did ask for those in the session hall. So can you please ask him to come in, then we can start session. Thank you very much.
Senator Rector, we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector, for joining us this morning, so we can have a quorum. Although you're the first one in. The legislature is back in session. I'd like to recognize Majority Leader Senator Respechio. You are recognized.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Speaker. So we have some orderly process here. I move to, now with saying the House rules that we suspend discussion on the second reading file, and we revert to legislative concurrences. That's my first motion.
On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you. And under legislative concurrences, I move then from your committee on the appointment of Mr. Joseph D. Lopez, Senior, to serve as Chairman, Council on Post-Secondary Institution Certification, with your committee's recommendation to confirm with some discussion. And also move from the Committee on Economic Development, Health, and Human Services, and Judiciary on the appointment of Mr. Alberto E. Tolentino to serve as magistrate judge. Judiciary Guam with the recommendation to confirm with also, with some discussion, Madam Speaker.
On that motion, then, are there any objections? None? Okay, so the first. So Senator Respechio, you recognize? Senator Respechio, you are recognized on the first. From the Committee on Education, the appointment of Mr. Joseph D. Lopez, Senior, to serve as Chairman, Council on Post-Secondary Institution Certification. Is there anyone who would like to speak on his appointment? Senator Rector, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good morning.
Good morning.
The Council on behalf of post-secondary education. It's my understanding, in reading the law and sitting through the hearings, that this council is designed to oversee and determine the appropriateness of post-secondary institutions that are currently in place on Guam, and that might be in place on Guam. And I think that it's highly appropriate that we have people that are qualified to sit on this committee. And by my opinion, how can you oversee a post-secondary institution if you don't have a post-secondary degree yourself? I ran a little informal survey, and it seemed that most of the people, actually, 100% of the people I asked, tend to agree with me. And while during the hearing, I spoke to Mr. Lopez and questioned him repeatedly about this, and he doesn't have a secondary degree. He attended a class at UOG or two, but that's not the same thing. It'd be kind of like putting somebody on, let's say, the Bar Association that wasn't an attorney. It would be like having somebody in the American Medical Association that wasn't a doctor. It just doesn't make any sense to me. And so therefore, I'm going to ask my colleagues to vote no on the confirmation of Mr. Lopez to this committee, and send it back to the governor, and ask him to appoint somebody who is more appropriate, and has the background, the knowledge, and the skills to serve on this committee in the capacity that the people of Guam need. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Rector. Senator Guthbert, on the confirmation of Mr. Joseph D. Lopez.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'm here to strongly support the nomination of Joey Lopez to the Post-Secondary Certification Council. I know Mr. Lopez. He was a classmate of mine at the FBI Citizens Academy. I know what his intellect and his mind is. I know what his commitment is. He has great ability to understand the issues that will be brought before this council. You know, most people in our community do not have college degrees, but they have professional experience and life experiences that prepare them for many intellectual challenges, including serving on important boards of the government of Guam. Now, I'm certain that other members of that council shall have all the academic pedigrees that are necessary, and will have the academic experience necessary to be able to look at the issues that come before them from an academic perspective. But what Mr. Lopez brings to this council is a background in law enforcement and investigative work that is also very critical. The reason being, as you all know, we've had a number of fly-by-night institutions try to set up here, calling themselves universities, to try to attract monies from students in Asia so they could get quote-unquote "an American degree." Mr. Lopez has the capability and the experience to be able to determine who and what are fly-by-night operators, and to be able to protect our community from ventures such as those that simply wish to take advantage of our location, Guam, USA, and misrepresent what they do to potential foreign clients. You know, I've met a lot of people in my life, Madam Speaker, who don't have college degrees, but they are adept, and they are strategic thinkers, and they are smart. And Mr. Lopez happens to be one of those individuals. Aside from that, he's a dear contributor to this community, a volunteer citizen contributor to many, many initiatives on our island, helping out in many ways in disasters, in times of need, in community service projects. You name it, Joey's there. And Joey will service well on this commission. I commend the governor for appointing Joey, as his nominee, to this new, very important board, and I feel he'll do a great job. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator Guthbert. Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, while I cannot completely disagree with the speaker from Manila with respect to individual not having credentials in the area for which the individual is nominated or being considered. The one, at least one single advantage of a person without the credentials with respect to what this person is going to do is him being a layperson. A lay representative, a lay individual present, in my opinion, an objective approach in whatever is the issue that is before the board in which this person will be serving, for example. Now, of course, it would be helpful if the individual has a post-secondary degree, but in my opinion, it would not be totally, he would not be totally disadvantaged. Again, he would represent a lay perspective with respect to what the committee, or rather, the organization is tasked to do. There's a need, of course, in the Guam Contractors Association, for example, that one be an engineer or so forth. And of course, I think for the charter school, there would be those who have the necessary credential, and of course, they will look at this from that point of view. But I think Mr. Lopez at least will provide an objective evaluation, and will approach any issue before him as a person not already committed to whatever is the issue before him, as he would be a layperson at that point. And to me, that is an advantage, is the objectivity of the individual, and what he can contribute to balance eventually whatever would be the decision of the board at that point. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Palacios. Senator Ada, on the confirmation of Mr. Lopez.
Madam Speaker, I, uh... I rise in support of the nomination of Mr. Lopez. And I've known Mr. Lopez for a long time. And while it would be ideal to have someone sitting on the board who has the, you know, the college education and all those certifications, I'm not convinced that that alone will be the factor that would determine whether the individual is qualified or not. For as long as I've known Mr. Lopez, he has been very much involved in the community. He was involved with his children's school, the same school that my daughters had attended. He, for the many times that I've had the opportunity to interact with him, he certainly came across as an individual who had a lot of common sense, was very logical. And to say that because he doesn't have a college degree, he is therefore not worthy, or does not have the wherewithal to be able to make good decisions, and I totally disagree with that. I've met people who have all kinds of degrees, up one arm and down the other, and I, you know, if they can find their way out the door, sometimes you wonder if they can. So I'm not convinced that all the degrees and certifications is what will qualify an individual to be able to do a good job sitting on that board as a policymaker. So certainly, I have full faith and confidence in Mr. Lopez, and I would urge my colleagues to similarly support him in this nomination. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. I'd like to recognize Senator Munia Barnes on the confirmation of Mr. Lopez. Somebody, please, lower that down for the senator.
I, good morning, Madam. I do, I might think I'm a little bit shorter than this.
Somebody will help you. There. Thank you very much.
Si, zos masi, Madam Speaker, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to stand in rising support of the nominee, the appointee of Mr. Joey D. Lopez, Senior. And as I share the sentiment of the good colleagues, of my colleagues from Manila, Senator Ada and Senator Guthbert, I think it's real important to realize that Mr. Lopez comes to this community as a very open-minded and contributing member to this island. Mr. Lopez continues to participate in civic organizations, nonprofit organizations. And if there's one thing I can say about Mr. Lopez is that he truly gives from the heart. Madam Speaker, Mr. Lopez may be noted for not having a college degree, but if there's one thing I know about Mr. Lopez is his continuing yearning for wanting to learn and to go get training. When he is involved in an organization, or a project, or a committee, this gentleman, along with his family, literally go out and take courses, go out and get training, go out and learn more, not just from computer work, but also from a lot of the folks he surrounds himself with. He doesn't pretend to have that juris doctrine like a lot of people might want to believe, but he goes out and he gets training. And for me, when you continue to go to the College of Hard Knocks and continue to go out and give of your time, continue to go out and get the training that's necessary for the project or the organization that you want to participate and give from the heart, then I think that's not a very bad idea. As a matter of fact, I think it's a very noble idea. And one of the reasons why I stand here in full support of Mr. Joey Lopez, I've worked with him in the past, working with him in organizations and projects such as the Relay for Life, keeping this community a safer place. He's worked in other projects that work closely with the Guam Police Department, and partnering with a lot of other nonprofit organizations to bring the awareness out of protecting our island, protecting our community, and just making it a better and safer place. And this appointment where he's going to be, which is the Post-Secondary Institution Certification, I think would be a very good organization or good committee that he should be involved with. As I said earlier, Madam Speaker, he stands with a very open mind. He works closely with his family. He takes, gets the training that he needs, if, like I said earlier, when he works on projects. So I think, for me personally, I think Mr. Lopez will be good for this committee, and I stand in full support. And I too ask the rest of my colleagues here in this august body to really open their hearts and give Mr. Lopez a chance to continue to serve our island. Si, zos masi.
Thank you very much, Senator Barnes. Senator Ogun, on the confirmation of Mr. Lopez.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good morning to you and to our colleagues. You know, I didn't want to perhaps let this presentation go. But I didn't want to let this conversation go without at least reemphasizing a point that was brought up by one of our colleagues. As a matter of fact, he was the initiator of the discussion on this appointment. And to look at the requirement or the emphasis on a post-secondary education, whether it's associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, or a master's degree, or a doctorate, in that particular case, I think those are critical educational academic achievements that could further enhance an individual's contribution. And for that, I commend our colleague for at least emphasizing that from his perspective, because I think that that's an issue that could conceivably benefit this particular organization, the Council on Post-Secondary Institution Certification. But then you look at the other part of the equation, Madam Speaker. You look at what have been the personal and professional accomplishments of this nominee. And I think it goes without saying, a number of our colleagues have alluded to the issue about being successful in the private sector, also giving back to the community in many different ways, in terms of civic organizations, in terms of giving to other activities out there in the community, sports associations, as well as school environments. So you look at the importance of a post-secondary education, which I consider extremely important and critical, when in fact it requires it, whether it's by statute or whether it's required by virtue of the nature of the work. But I think that to find a balance here, it certainly is reflective of, if you don't have your educational requirements, and it's not mandated and required by statute, what other contributions can you bring to this organization so that it ultimately serves and carries out the objectives and the mission of that particular organization? And most importantly, how are you going to contribute to assure the people of Guam that they have your commitment, and that they have, that you have their best interests in serving in this particular body? And just by looking at the successful nature of this individual in the private sector, in the business community, and looking at how he on a regular basis contributes, whether it be financially, or time-wise, or in other ways, gives back to the community in many, many different ways, I think that's self-explanatory. When you look at Mr. Lopez and what he continues to do for our children, regardless as to whether they're part of his children and his school environment, he continues to reach out and help. And for that purpose, I stand here in support of his nomination, but not belittling one of the concerns that was brought up by the prior speaker, that any time that you're venturing into an organization like this, it would always be helpful, if it's not in statute, it would always enhance that individual's ability to contribute to the post-secondary organization that Mr. Lopez is being appointed to. So I stand in support of his nomination. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Ogun. Are there any other speakers who'd like to speak on the confirmation of Mr. Joseph Lopez for the Council on Post-Secondary Institution Certification? Senator Titigui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good morning to everyone. I am in full, full support of Mr. Lopez's confirmation. He has been a great contributor to our community in every way. And I hope and ask my colleagues to support this man, and he's well qualified for this position. And I just wanted to stand to give you my support, give this body my support, to let them know that this man is well deserving of this position. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Titigui. Are there any other speakers? There being none, then, so on the motion then to place the confirmation of Mr. Joseph Lopez to the third reading file, are there any objections? One, there is one objection. Sorry, Mr. Senator, I forgot. So there is an objection to placing... So there is an objection to placing Mr. Lopez's nomination down to the third reading file. Call of the House. Sergeant Arms, can you please call, there's a request for a call of the House, so please Senator Barnes, can you please, and Senator Agun, can you please come and take your seats because we are calling for the vote? So since there is an objection, I'm going to have to call for the vote. All those then who are in favor of sending the nomination of Mr. Joseph Lopez on the Council of Post-Secondary Institution Certification to the third reading file, please raise Motion carries. On the nomination, an appointment of Mr. Alberto E. Tolentino to serve as the magistrate judge judiciary of Guam, is there anyone who would like to speak on his nomination? Senator Agun, you're recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. First of all, I want to thank yourself as well as the members of the body for allowing the delay of this discussion until today, so that in fact, as the chair of the committee that was tasked with the responsibility of ensuring that he goes through the proper confirmation process, that we had conducted an extensive implementation of that particular aspect. But Madam Speaker, we do have, in this particular case, Attorney Alberto E. Tolentino, who has been selected and recommended by the Guam Bar Association, and also nominated by the Chief Justice to serve as a magistrate judge for the judiciary of Guam. And when we received this particular nomination, I believe it was the first week of July, the official transmission, Madam Speaker, it took a little while, only because there were some requirements by law, such as an FBI investigation and certain other prerequisites prior to the hearing. But after receiving all of that information, Madam Speaker, there were six individuals that testified in support of Mr. Tolentino, and it doesn't highlight his family members who were there to show physical presence and to show and express their support for the nominee. There was one particular individual, as a matter of fact, the former Attorney General who had brought up some concerns, which the committee felt that based on all of these suggestions and highlights provided during the testimony, during the entire process, being selected and nominated and recommended by the peers, his peers, the Guam Bar Association, and also having a history in which he served in different capacities, Madam Speaker, I think it bodes well that in fact this nominee certainly should be confirmed by this body. When we're looking at some of his historical contributions in the law arena, he was, he served as the chief deputy attorney general between January of 2007 up until the date of his appointment. And immediately, shortly after the date of his appointment, Madam Speaker, if you recall during the judiciary's presentation by the Chief Justice, shortly after that, he was terminated out of the Attorney General's office, I guess on the presumption that in fact, or the understanding that he was going to proceed through this process. He also served as the ethics prosecutor between June 2001 to November 2006, and as a research attorney for the Supreme Court of Guam between 98 and 2001, and then finally his last service in the law arena prior to this nomination between June 96 to 98 was as an associate attorney in the Law Office of Caesar Cabot. So that basically reflects his contribution and his work experience. But one of the things that during the course of the public hearing, the confirmation hearing, that we had tried to garner from Attorney Tolentino was really his judicial temperament, his ability to make decisions, and his willingness to be able to ensure that the laws are properly carried out. And I think that based on the discussions during the course of the confirmation hearing, is my understanding, that he also lent himself on a personal basis to a number of our colleagues, if not all of our colleagues, had visited each of our offices just to share his perspective in terms of his background and his nomination. And so, Madam Speaker, the Committee on Judiciary hereby puts forth this recommendation with an incredibly thick one-inch document reflecting the committee report, which highlights all of his contributions and all of his service within the legal arena. So, Madam Speaker, that is not my cellphone, so I do not owe $5. But on that note, Madam Speaker, I request consideration by all of our colleagues and that this particular nomination proceed down to the voting file. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Agun. Are there any other speakers then on the confirmation then of Mr. Alberto Tolentino? Senator P.J. Cruz, Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of Alberto's nomination to the position of magistrate. I had the great fortune of having hired Alberto onto the staff of the Supreme Court when I was Chief Justice, and more importantly, he served in a function that I wish he was available for the community at this point. He served as the Ethics Council for the court system and did an excellent job in that position. I think he would make an excellent magistrate, and maybe hopefully in the future, an excellent judge. But this being the first nomination to the bench as a magistrate, I rise in full support, having worked with him for the last 15 years, knowing his capabilities and his ethical standards, which are beyond reproach, and I support his nomination.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized on the confirmation.
Sisus Massey, talu, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too rise in full support for the appointee Judge, I mean Alberto Tolentino to be the magistrate's judge. I too have known Mr. Tolentino for, I think, I'd like to say over 30 years, as our, we, our family and his family have gone to the same school, we've worked together. Also, as he was an attorney, we've also worked together in nonprofit organizations, and I just think that based on his experience, based on the work he's done, I truly believe that he would make a great magistrate judge, so I stand here in full support, and I ask my colleagues to vote for the same. Thank you.
Very welcome, Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios, on the nomination.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I do rise in support of the nomination of Attorney Tolentino. I have to observe him, make some presentation before this body in behalf of the Attorney General's office. I don't know him that long, but I am confident that he will make a fine addition to the judiciary. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Palacios. Senator Guthers, you're recognized on the appointment of Mr. Tolentino.
You know, Madam Speaker, I feel sorry for the Attorney General, because Attorney Tolentino was a wonderful chief assistant to her, and I'm sure she feels the loss, and will soon feel the loss on perhaps a more permanent basis, in losing Attorney Tolentino as a magistrate judge if he's confirmed by this legislature. My interaction with him is very interesting. I find him to be a very reasoned man, careful, thoughtful, prudent, strategic in understanding and applying the law. And I think he will be a very fair magistrate judge, which is something that we need in our court system. I wish they were more like him, and I'm very happy to support his nomination. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthers. On the appointment of Mr. Tolentino to serve as a magistrate judge, Senator Escaldón.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I do rise in support of Alberto Tolentino to be a magistrate judge. A little bit of history, Alberto and I actually grew up together. His father was a well-known doctor on this island, so back in the day, when the island was much smaller, every occasion, the doctors would get together and again, have dinner and whatnot, and all the doctors' kids would hang out together. And knowing Alberto, he's not the kind of guy who's ever carried an air about him. In fact, he's one of those who has always had to be, had to persist in everything that he did. He, I know that he was, he's a guy of just plain common sense. He looks at the views from a very, from the everyday man's perspective, and I think that is the kind of perspective that we do need to have sitting on the bench at that position. So again, in short, I just want to reiterate my support for this nomination. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Escaldón. On the appointment of Mr. Alberto Tolentino to serve as a magistrate judge, the motion was to place his appointment down to the third reading file. Are there any objections? No objections, and so ordered. Senator Titigui, then, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. At this time, I would ask all my colleagues and the staff at the legislature to take a moment of silence. We have lost two individuals, one that was a couple weeks ago, P.J. Borja, a photographer who also worked for the legislature, and just this morning, Rowell Santiago, photographer, just passed away from a heart attack. These are two individuals that have touched each and every one of us, especially me, as I was in that area of photography, and ask my colleagues if they can please stand and take a moment of silence for these two individuals who captured our lives through film, who was there to always take a picture for a smile, for a very special moment to give to us so that we have memories, as now today we remember them in our hearts. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Titigui. Senator Respejo? So we're back to the second reading. And is the author ready? Senator Guthers, we're, I promised her that Bill 92 then will be in this morning's session. Senator Guthers on Bill Number 92?
You should have two documents in front of you. Bill 92, as introduced by Senators Guthers, Palacios, and Respejo. And then you should also have a set of the 11 amendments. Amendment Number 2 was removed from the packet, so your amendment should be 1, 3, all the way to the last amendment, which is, I believe, Amendment 11. And with that, Madam Speaker, I'd like to proceed. Last week, I gave a little introduction to the bill, so I won't be repetitive, but the purpose of the bill basically is to restore many of the functions and jurisdictions, and to clarify certain functions of the Civil Service Commission by repealing and reenacting Title IV GCA, Sections 4403, 4408, 4409, and 5105, and sub-items B and C of Title IV GCA, and the new Sections 4410 and 4411. I will go through each of the proposed amendments to the original Bill 92-30 with the allowance of the Speaker and my colleagues.
You may continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Let's begin with the First Amendment, Amendment Number 1, and you should all have a copy of that. Amendment Number 1 is on Page 3, in Section 2, Item B, Line 11. Inserted after the word "employee" will be the sentence, "The commission shall adopt rules and procedures to handle such appeals." This change will give the commission the specific authority to promulgate rules on the subject of adverse action appeals. So move, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, that's Amendment 1, on Page 3, Line 11, to add the words, "The commission shall adopt rules and procedures to handle such appeals." On the amendment, are there any discussions? No discussions, there are no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and colleagues. The next amendment is on Page 5, in Section 2, Item E, Line 9, to delete the language, quote, "after their effective date," unquote, and to insert in its place, quote, "from the date of the personnel action," unquote. This amendment takes into consideration the nature of personnel actions and makes reasonable the 20-day time period to submit the personnel actions to the commission. This amendment is also a result of the commission's collaboration with various human resources offices throughout the government of Guam. The second part of this amendment will be in on Line 14, to insert after the word, quote, "made," unquote, the following, quote, "And such non-refundable amount shall be immediately deposited into the commission's revolving fund," unquote. This provides enforcement strength to this subsection's requirement of submitting to the commission and agency's personnel action within the prescribed time. It has been an ongoing experience of the commission that certain agencies either do not submit their personnel actions at all, or submit them a year later. Recall the purpose of submitting personnel actions to the commission is so that the commission can audit the action to determine if things were done properly, which goes to ensuring accountability in the merit system and making sure that government employers are hired, transferred, promoted, demoted, and given salary increments and other actions at the correct level, no more and no less. This amendment will also create a source of funds apart from the general fund and legislative appropriation for the commission's revolving account. So move, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, Senator Agun?
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Just a couple of questions, if I may pose, to the mover of the amendment, Madam Speaker, just for clarification purposes.
Is the author you, then?
Certainly. Certainly.
For the questions? Please proceed, Senator Agun.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Senator Gee. Just, I guess, one of the questions that I have is, this 20-day, 20 calendar days reflective of the old 60-day rule? Or is it a different calendar days that applies to a different provision? And the reason I bring that up, Madam Speaker, is that I think that there definitely has to be the direct recognition and training of proper personnel, once this legislation is enacted into law, so that employees inclusive of managers and administrators within the respective agencies, that they understand this timeline. Because in a few instances, the 60-day rule in the past was not met, whether it's because of negligence or inaction on the part of the administrator or director of that particular agency, it had a tremendous impact in terms of allowing the process to proceed, and allowing the Civil Service Commission members to review the case that is before them. So that, I guess, is one of the questions that I have, whether this 20-day, 20 calendar days is equivalent to the former 60-day rule.
Madam Speaker, the 60-day rule does not relate to this.
Okay.
This is specifically the timeframe to submit copies of personnel actions to the Civil Service Commission.
Okay, and then also, Madam Speaker, if I may continue, the failure to provide the required notices of personnel actions within 10 calendar days. I would certainly recommend 10 business days rather than calendar days, because of, obviously, having had the opportunity to serve as a director, sometimes devoting all of the efforts towards providing the appropriate information, sometimes maybe a little bit more time-consuming. But that's, that's just a suggestion that I would like to proffer to the mover of the amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker, thank you, Senator Gee.
Sure.
So you're going, wait, you are making that amendment, you want to amend the amendment, but...
Please to read, rather than 10 calendar days, it would read 10 business days, business calendar days.
No business days.
Business days, just business days.
No objections.
They're different between calendar days.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the business days, yes, so Senator Ada.
Speaker, if we're making that clarification, then probably we should make that change throughout the bill, because in, for example, in Page Four, the agency head is required to respond within 10 calendar days. So there's no, so there's no confusion between, well, is this one a calendar day or a working day? Then we probably should be consistent throughout. So I move then to make, let's see.
Oh, wait.
He made an amendment to the amendment.
Yeah, well, I think, I think it'd be best if you, let me take a minute recess, you can discuss this with the mover of that amendment, because you can't have two other amendments over an amendment, so we'll take a brief recess. Agun, after conferring with your colleague.
Thank you.
Point of, oh, another recess, one minute recess.
Point of inquiry?
The legislation's back in session. Senator Agun, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to withdraw my original amendment, and...
On the amendment to withdraw, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and then to insert in that particular provision 15, and then it would continue to read calendar days. So it would, it would be 15 calendar days rather than business days.
Yeah.
So on Line 11, Page Five, that it would be 15 calendar days, 15. On the amendment, one five?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Thank you very much, Senator Agun. So on the Guthers amendment, and that's on Line Nine, is to delete after the effective date, and include the words "from the date of personnel action." And then the Second Amendment's on Line 14, to add "after the word 'made,' and such non-refundable amount shall be immediately deposited into the Commission's revolving fund." Are there any objections? If anyone would like to speak on the amendment? On the amendments, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I don't know whether the objection should be made here, or when we go back into talking about the main body of the bill. But this does have some, you know, my concern is basically germane to where, first off, a non-refundable amount to be deposited. But preceding that, it's a 10% salary reduction of the agency head and its deputy. That's me, that's five bucks, I'll get to you later.
Whoops.
You know, Madam Speaker, my concern here is the 10% salary reduction. It really does not show here as to who, who's going to be responsible for the imposition of this, I guess, penalty, if you will? Who's going to make that determination? It's, sometimes when they say, you know, silence is golden, but here, silence is deafening. But where is, who does it? And so if I can yield, if the mover of the amendment, and actually the author of the bill, would yield to a question as to how this is, because it does tie to the amendment that's being proposed.
Senator Guthers, do you yield to the question?
Well, I believe the Civil Service Commission would impose the fine and deposit it into its revolving fund. If the Speaker would like to be more specific and make amendment to say the Civil Service Commission is authorized to impose the fine, that would be fine, Madam Chair.
Senator Blas, are you satisfied with the answer? Would you like to continue?
The civil, so this will be, the Commission then will impose it on the agency head. I don't know, Madam, you know, that, that's an enforcement activity, and I don't know whether or not they have that, if we're going down an area that really is giving them more power than, than we want to give them. I'll do a little bit of more research and do a little bit more inquiry, but I'm a little bit uncomfortable as to whether or not giving the Civil Service Commission now the power to be able to dock pay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator Blas. On the Guthers amendment, is there anyone who would like to speak on the Guthers amendment? Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
I'm sorry, I beg your pardon, Madam Chair.
Senator, wait, I've got Senator Palacios, who's...
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I look at this, and I, while I agree with the idea, of course, to dock the 10%, I would like to make an amendment that, to remove the deputy, for several reasons, for two reasons at least, not all agencies have deputies. And then, I think that this is a new concept, I think that the agency head should be sufficient. And in the event that, that somebody is deacting, I think that whoever was in a position to do, to submit the report, then that person in the acting capacity should be the one, and not necessarily the, the actual agency head. I think that we should have some reading to that effect, so that whoever, again, is in a position to be able to execute such action, should be the person from whom the 10% salary be deducted. And I'd like to ask a question with the, the mover of this amendment, with respect to the 10%. If I may ask?
Senator Guthers, do you yield to a question?
Certainly, Madam Chair.
The 10% is based on the annual, not the monthly?
Yes, annual.
Okay. So my amendment, the Guthers amendment, is to remove the deputy, the deputy, and some provision there that the agency head, or whoever was acting at the time, that the necessary action has to be taken. That would be the person from whom the 10% should be deducted. That's my...
Point of order, Madam Speaker.
Yes, please state your point of order.
With all due respect to my good colleague from Tom Pago, I understand, and you and I have concerns with the issues that he's talking about. However, we are talking about an amendment that right now focuses in only on an issue, on that a non-refundable amount shall be immediately deposited into the Commission's revolving fund. That's the only issue we're talking about right now.
You are correct.
I too would like to speak on the issue that the Senator from Tom Pago was speaking up, but I don't believe it's before us right now.
I withdraw my remarks.
Yes. On the Guthers amendment, which you have before you, the two lines that are underscored.
I have no objection to that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Senator Palacios. Any objections? No objections to the Senator Guthers amendment? Although there was a question, he wasn't sure yet, Senator Blas, so you didn't quite say whether it was...
Well, that's why I said, ma'am, I think I have to agree with the good Senator from Tumoni. There, you know, the amendment is to place that, I think that later on, giving the opportunity, after all the amendments is done, we're going back into the body of the bill, there may be some discussion and suggestion as to how to tighten that up.
Okay, so there are no objections, then, therefore, the amendment then passes. Senator, Senator Ada, point of inquiry, please state your point.
I noticed that this section, Section...
Two.
Two.
Item E.
Yes. It's a repeal and reenactment. So I'm just, I guess I need to get clear in my mind, then, are we, are there, were there other changes made, then, in the legislation?
Absolutely. When it says repealed, when it says repealed, and then you're reenacting, that means this is a whole new...
So that means there could have been many other amendments that were made to the original law.
So it's important, yes, so it's important to pull out the original law.
Well, I would like to ask maybe the sponsor, if she can provide, the author of the bill, if she can provide a bill that shows the changes that were made to the original bill.
Well, I'll try to get the original law.
You know, I really hate to delay the session, you know, much longer, because we can ask that, you know, the clerks to have some copies made, then, of what it is in the code.
That would help for those that would like...
And then we can distribute those to all the members. Do you, do you have a copy, Senator?
I don't have one with me, no, Madam Chair.
Okay, we'll take a brief recess, and we'll have some copies made, then, for the members. Senator Guthers, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, my office is working on the markup.
Okay, then so there's no motion, I mean, no objections to the motion? So ordered. So we're going to go ahead and move on to the next bill. And let me see where is my, Senator, 151, Senator Palacios, you are recognized on your
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 151 is, was introduced at the request of the Director of Department of Parks and Recreation. And it's a bill that proposes to authorize the Director of Parks and Recs to designate areas within the Guam territorial park systems as alcohol-free zone and to provide for penalty for non-compliance by adding some sections. Essentially, this bill has two parts. The first part is kind of misleading. It says to authorize the Director of Parks and Recreation to designate alcohol-free zone. Right now, under the general provision, for example, it says that the Director of Parks and Recreation may promulgate rules and regulations for the protection and the service of the parks. Right now, there are seven parks under the pilot program that, that were designated as alcohol-free zone under that authority. But this bill proposes to institutionalize, I guess, that authority as it is. Now, really the important part here and the new part here is, is the provision for penalties for non-compliance and the enforcement of some of these regulations would have to be by the park rangers, the territorial patrol officers, and also the police officers. There are criteria provided as to which parks or how parks may be designated as alcohol-free zone. For example, right now under the, the pilot project, Fort Santa Agada is designated at this moment as alcohol-free zone for the historic items in that park. Senator Angel Santos Ladestone Park, again, for the historic nature of it. The Padre Palomo Park for the safety nature of it. East Agana Park for the safety feature of it. West Agana Park, which is the Alupan Park, is for the safety. Near Route One and the Adalup is for safety. The Skate Park at Dedido is for safety. And those are the three, actually there are three categories for the historic part of it, for the safety nature of it, as these parks are, are actually designated, or rather near Route One, which is the main thoroughfare. And it has to do, of course, with picnickers that eventually would have to go home, probably drive their car, they exit right into the main route or themselves, the picnickers, if they are on pedestrian, they, they are near those areas. I do not envision, for example, the designation of alcohol-free zone, the, the Taga Chang Beach Park, for example. But those are the, the issues that are presented. And the, the Director of Parks and Recreation, for example, provided some of the panel of frequently asked questions, and I would like to ask the, the, I guess, the page here to pass that out. So that, it has to do with, the title here is reference, reference to Bill 151. And the question here is, why is the Department of Parks and Recreation doing this? And their response, of course, or their responses over the years, the department has encountered numerous complaints and problems with unregulated alcohol consumption in the park. And complaints, of course, include intoxication, vandalism, auto pedestrian accidents and so forth. I would like to ask my colleagues to look at that. And of course, not all the park will be designated, only those actually that has, again, historical value so as to protect tho- those items in there. And of course, it has to do with pedestrian safety. Also, that the few that will be designated as alcohol-free zone are more or less are preserved and maintained, reserved, I guess, for be, those parks that, that frequently patronized by, with, by families with children. And that's one of the criteria. There is a process by which, of course, the designation of alcohol-free zone within the park systems would have to be subjected to the AAA process. I would think that it will be at that point when the Director of Parks and Recs will have an input in, in the formulation of some of these rules and regulations. The, the implementation of this, should it pass, is of course, subject to the approval of some of these rules and regulations. I would venture to say, based on the testimony provided, that even though some of these parks may be designated alcohol-free zone, they would probably be in the rules and regulations an exception, a one-time exception or a case-by-case exception, not exception but a waiver for the moment for what it may be used for. So again, there is the flexibility. And so I asked my colleagues, of course, to look at this. This had a, a public hearing, there was concern expressed by, of course, by a member of this body with respect to, I guess, the, the restriction upon the people of Guam to actually just to go to any park. I do not disagree with that. There are 70 parks under the jurisdiction of the Department of Parks and Recreation. At the moment, seven have been designated alcohol-free zone on a pilot project. And the director is, may be considering perhaps other areas. According to testimonies, the mayors may be interested in, in such authority or may be linked, linked with the Director of Parks and Recreation for, for such authority to be able to designate within their village some areas. Although that is not in this bill, the, the testimony given by, by the Director of Parks is that there is a desire by some of the mayors to, to be able to at least consider some park areas within their village to, to be designated alcohol-free zone, maybe not 24 hours a day, seven days a week, but maybe on certain days. Those are the flexibility. But the idea to, to designate alcohol-free zone is actually the essence of this bill and to give the, to institutionalize such authority to, for the Director of Parks and Recreation and not just reliance on the general provision on the so-called, the director may promulgate rules and regulations for the establishment of policies and procedures regulating the parks. Because right now, the current designation is based on that general provision. And I asked my colleagues, of course, to, by the way, the, if there should be fines collective, reference to violation of some of these conditions, that money is going to go into special funds to support the Parks and Recreation, maybe purchase equipment, radio, as the park rangers now actually are without radios, they're using their cell phone, they don't have a vehicle. They have to drive their own vehicle to the, to the beach and then park there and then walk, do a, a walk patrol. Perhaps all-terrain vehicle, a four-wheel vehicle can be purchased from that fund. So that, that is actually the purpose of, for the use of such funds should, should this go through. And I ask my colleagues to look at this and consider it. And if there's some reservation, we can make it better to the agreement of, of everybody. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. On the, oh wait, you need.
Of course, I, I moved to place it on third reading pile for purpose of discussion.
I'm so sorry. Yes, on that, that motion then, are there any speakers who would like to, Senator, I have Senator Panglinen and then Senator Rector. Senator Panglinen, you're recognized. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, I missed you. Okay, I'll put you down.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, what I see this bill doing is trying to legitimize something that has already occurred. And to my dismay, I think even increase existing penalties and so forth that in some cases may be, you know, onerous and way beyond what the crime that we're trying to now make and classify in law. I understand the need and the concept and everything else, but I think this, for me, this is one of the classic cases of cart before the horse. We're going to say the director has all these powers or actually he's already taken these powers, implemented them, now we want to criminalize and put penalties on the violations and then we're going to authorize him to do it. It, it doesn't make sense. I want to know what the criteria is. I want to know where he's going to do it prior to giving him the authority to do so. And I know that they say that, well, he's going to do that through the AAA. Well, I say that let's put the AAA in process because he doesn't need any authority right now to put together rules and regs. He doesn't need any authority to, to, to present a list of parks where he will implement. He wants to be alcohol-free and let the public go through that process. Let the public scrutinize the rationale rather than, than putting, putting these authorities in place so that he can do something he can already do. And I, I really believe that for me, there is greater value to saying, hold on, let us take a look at what's been happening, let us go back to the public and do the necessary process of informing the public, drafting your rules and regulations, and then bring them down to this body and this body can make a decision whether to amend and so forth. But to just now institutionalize that without knowing, we may all say in here, oh yeah, we're going to only do it at historic parks. Where does it say that in law? Where, where does it say, if that's our intent here, then let's put it into law. But I say, let us first get from these individuals why they're doing it, what the need is, what the statistics are, where the holes are, how they're going to plug up all the holes in their administrative adjudication law drafting of the rules and regulations, and then let us review that. Why do we want to put this power in place now and then have him do the work? I say, let's do the work, let's do the hard work, the heavy lifting, as sometimes is referred to, and then we'll debate the policy. Rather than put the policy in place and then we'll debate the, the results of that policy. No, let us know exactly why they're doing it, let them put it in writing, let them tell us where they're going to do it, let them tell us why they're doing it, let us, let them tell us the statistics, and then, much more importantly, much more importantly, let the public tell us what they think about this. Let them give, let them go through that process of giving it to the department, have the department then review what they've done, revise what they've done based upon the public input, and then send it down here and we can then decide that we want to proceed with this policy. So while I applaud the intent, I understand that we want to do it right because there's a question of, are we doing it right now? Let us do it right, let us do it well, let us do it with an open and transparent process and then we'll make the decisions and then, based upon the public input, we'll do so. But the way the bill is written now, to give him that policy and then do the work, I'm, I'm more apt to side on, let him do the work first and then we'll debate the policy. So in that respect, Madam Speaker, the concept's good, some of the implementation that's done is good. I'd like to know what the experiences have. How many people have been actually arrested? How many traffic, what's the reduction in traffic accidents that, that have occurred around this park because we now have this law? Is there even any rational relationship between that? And why isn't the police responding to calls of intoxicated persons in the, in the parks? Why is it that they can't, they have the ability to do that? They can respond, it's their duty, it's their job, it's their responsibility to enforce those laws? We're saying here that never, that officers cannot deal with, with no statutory authority to effectively and safely, and safely deal with the situation? Why don't, I, I don't agree with that statement. I think there's enough statutes in the books, enough departments and agencies with the statutory authority to respond to these things. You know, disorderly conduct is disorderly conduct, peace officers are sworn to uphold all the statutes of Guam. And I'm not sure that we limit the park rangers to saying you can't enforce the, those kinds of statutes in the park. I, I don't have any basis of legal fact for that statement, yet it's written in here. So in that respect, I just think that the way that, that we're approaching this, to me is, you know, cart before the horse. Let's, let's get that horse in front of the cart, let us then move forward with the proper mechanisms and the proper administrative procedures and then we'll debate the policy rather than putting the policy in and once it's in, then we debate whether or not it's good. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. And I'm sorry I didn't put you down, but Senator Munya Born, so I do recognize you
Sidoosma, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too had some concerns when, when this bill was being heard at, at the public hearing. Though the concept of the alcohol-free zone is a pilot project and is in place at the seven parks right now as listed, Fort Santa Agada, the Senator Angel Santos Ladestone Memorial Park, the Padre Palomo Park, the East Agana Beach Park, the West Agana Park, Aluping Park, Adalup, and then the Skate Park, as noted by the author of this legislation. Some of the concerns that came up was that other mayors from around the island have concerns about being able to hold different kind of events in, in the parks within their villages that are under the purview of the Department of Parks and Recs. And that, that there were some concerns that people wouldn't have the choice to be to drink or consume any form of alcohol. And whether it be a good thing or a bad thing, we can stand here and debate the issue on the pros and cons on what's good and what's not good. And some of the concerns that were also brought back were the, the safety efforts of people drinking at, at the public beaches and the consumption of alcohol. And then detrimental things happened to the effect where people go into the beaches at the parks where they allow alcohol right now and, you know, lifeguards had to save folks because they were too intoxicated to do things. I mean, those were some of the concerns that came up. And I too, Madam Speaker, want to say that I support the whole, the intent of the bill but do have some concerns when it, when it comes to how the, the, this implementation, if passed into law, can be put into effect. So I'm hoping to listen very intently to the rest of my colleagues to seeing what other amendments could be or what other recommendations could be put in to this bill so that we can make sure that the protocols, the safeguards and protocols can be put in place so that our children and, and who share the public playground, who share the public parks could be protected from those who are literally either intoxicated or, or has consumed a little bit too much for their own good. Sometimes, Madam Speaker, as we look about the litter in the parks that we have, you know, some will say that there are more brands there versus those of, of soda cans, there are more liquor aluminum cans around the beaches. There are more liquor aluminum cans around the beaches that aren't picked up. And of course, this is not a pretty sight. It deters from our off-island visitors from seeing the place. As a matter of fact, they quoted how embarrassing it could be. They also noted that, I guess from the director's point of view of Parks and Recs, it said 25% of the drowning on Guam's public beaches were related to this alcohol consumption. And it was also noted by the same director that the drinking alcohol in public places is a part of the local culture. I tend to disagree with that, but again, Madam Speaker, as the concerns that some of the village mayors brought up was being able to find creative ideas and activities where they could hold functions, be able to sell beverages of all kinds, and be able to raise funds for their own community. And those are some of the concerns that were brought up from the mayors that were present on the day of the public hearing. So as I said earlier, as I support the main intent of the bill, I do want to hear a lot of the perspectives from my colleagues to see what we can do to tweak this legislation or to look at the recommendations and the solutions so that this could be a win-win for everybody on hand. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to at least voice some of those concerns coming from the mayors, the different mayors, from some of the different villages, to some of the constituents who are there, and some of those who presented written testimony in the committee. So I think it's important that we just hear more. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Rector, on the amendment, on the motion, rather, I'm sorry.
Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Governor. Madam Speaker slash Governor, oh, now I have a new chair. Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. Boy, you guys got to quit moving around. It's confusing me, I'm telling you. I rise in opposition to this bill, and I do it for a number of reasons. I mean, the intention of this bill was put forth to provide safe and clean parks for our people. A noble gesture and a good thought. And I think it's something that all of us want. But the trick is, is we need to find a way to truly provide safe and clean parks for our people. Just implementing more restrictive laws that we don't have the ability to enforce do absolutely no good. And it was funny, I too sat in the public hearing on this bill and questioned the director quite regularly. And he was saying, "Well, you know, in the parks that allow, in the parks that allow consumption of alcohol now, like, we'll show up in the morning and there'll be beer cans all over the place and overflowing the trash cans." And I said, "Yes, but isn't that illegal?" "Well, yes, that's illegal." "Well, what's the point of putting a new law making more things illegal? Well, we don't even enforce the stuff that now is illegal." Look, what we need is good supervised enjoyment of our parks. Not restricting our people. I mean, our public park system are for the public. All of our families to go and enjoy a day at the beach, to go and enjoy the beauty of our island. Not for just a few people, not for just the people that don't consume alcohol, right? It's for all of our people. What we need are more park rangers. We only have three. What we need are vehicles so our park rangers can go out and patrol the parks. What we need are radios for our park rangers so they can communicate. What we need is better enforcement. This bill does not address the true needs of our people. All it interests is a knee-jerk reaction and a somewhat, a somewhat act to look like we're doing something when in fact we aren't. Madam Speaker, we need to stop pushing legislation that looks like we're doing something. Our code is filled with it. All of us can go through it, and we can look at all, pull up all sorts of provisions of stuff where I read it, and I'm going, "Holy guacamole, that's a law? How come it's never being enforced?" Let us solve the problem instead of passing new unenforceable laws. Let us go back and make sure we fully fund the Department of Parks and Recreation. Let us go back and make sure we give all of our park rangers the tools they need to do their jobs and keep our parks safe. Let us go back and make sure that all of our parks are available and accessible to all of our families all of the time. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Rector. Senator Tidaway?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Or, do I call you Speaker under? Okay. I too was at this public hearing for this bill. And when it was asked the question about what we can do right now, they brought, Senator Palacios brought a bill that discussed this with the other director of Parks and Rec, along with the police department, in contact with each other, in deliberation between each other all the time with how can we resolve a problem that we have in the parks with people drinking? We don't have enough park rangers or police officers to go to all 70 sites. So do we just let it go? Or just do our best and monitor these? We come up with a solution, a proactive bill. And this is exactly what this bill is, is being proactive. Let's not wait until somebody gets hurt or even dies at one of these parks because of alcohol. This is what we're doing now, and this is what we're supposed to do. Be proactive to make sure something like this is not going to happen. It's already obvious that it gets very close to having problems at these parks when alcohol is involved. So let's allow certain parks where families feel safe that they can take their children and enjoy a good afternoon at a park without the worry of somebody drinking way too much, getting way out of hand. And boom, there goes the beautiful Sunday at the park. I stand in full support of this bill. And I ask my colleagues that if there's any type of amendments in here that you can proffer, then so be it to ensure that we can enforce these laws that are implemented in this bill. And if you ask me, this bill is so simple, clear to the point. If you're caught the first time, there's a violation from $100 up to $100 to $500. On the second time you're caught, it's very simple. Why do we have to complicate it? Why do we have to find reasons not to put this through by asking for this and that and all these information that we already know alcohol on some of these areas can cause major problems and even death? We all know that. What kind of statistics do you need on that? How many fights have started in different areas because of alcohol? Do you need statistics on that? It's common sense. And sometimes, common sense is most uncommon. Mr. Speaker, I ask my dear, my colleagues, please, give an opportunity for some families who want to go to areas where they feel safe. Give them that opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Tidaway. Senator Ogun, do I understand you have an amendment? Or can I call Senator Palacios first? Senator Palacios, did you wish to speak? Oh, I thought your hand went up. Oh, okay. Are there any other speakers who wish to be recognized before we go to the closing? Senator Ogun, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, you know, I was speaking to the sponsor of this particular legislation, and I think that his intent is certainly one to be recognized. And I'll give you a good example. Back in 2007, or 2000, I'm sorry, 2000, yeah, 2007, there was an application that I had put in for the use of a particular park, the one right across the ITC area. At that time, I was notified that this is alcohol-free and is restricted from any consumption. And I thought, okay. But then when I came around to meeting with some family and friends, they were concerned or questioning why it was alcohol-free. But you know, in retrospect, Mr. Speaker, it was because, and I'm taking, I'm not looking at it from the perspective of keeping the parks clean because we have park maintenance personnel that try and do their best to be able to keep our parks clean. I'm not necessarily looking at it from the perspective of the park rangers because they have their responsibility. Although we need to hire more park rangers, they've been beefed up in the last two, three years in additional personnel. I remember at one time when there was only one particular park ranger securing and monitoring all of our 70 public parks. But you know, Mr. Speaker, when I thought about it and in retrospect, in terms of looking at the function that we had at that time, everyone enjoyed it. But then I also discussed with the sponsor of this legislation about my concern about the recession or the impoundment of vehicles. Is it illegal or is it not? If we are going to make it illegal to drink in some of these parks, I think the application of fines and penalties is appropriate. I think that in this particular case, it should be expanded to include community service so that these individuals who do not comply with these regulations or these restrictions would have to clean up those parks. And that that would be their contribution back towards not complying with these rules and regulations, or in this case, should this legislation pass with this law. But you know, Mr. Speaker, there's also another issue that was brought up during the course of the public hearing about a suggestion on possibly restricting individuals from drinking within a certain distance from public playgrounds. I thought that was an excellent idea, excellent suggestion. You have children, if our biggest concern is really the influence that it may have on children within that nearby vicinity or in that particular gathering, then perhaps we need to move in that direction in terms of outrightly restricting the consumption of alcohol within a certain distance from the playground. Not necessarily if a park, as an example, hypothetically, Epa Beach Park, is not part of the alcohol-free restriction, then there's a particular playground there that perhaps should remain alcohol-free in terms of restricting the consumption of alcohol within a certain distance from that playground. That, I think, is certainly reasonable to consider. But on that note, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move for, because I did mention my concern about the impoundment of vehicles and the forfeiture of vehicles, I would like to move for the deletion of Section 6 and 7 because that deals with those particular provisions. And I think that the imposition of fines and penalties would be sufficient in conjunction with expanding it to include community service for cleanup of parks, which is going to be a subsequent amendment that I would like to proffer. But, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move for the deletion of Section 6 and Section 7, dealing specifically with the impoundment or forfeiture of vehicles. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Ogun. On the Ogun Amendment deleting Section 6 and 7, who wishes to be heard? Senator Rector.
I rise in favor of this amendment, Mr. Speaker. You know, the impoundment of vehicles is literally insane. You know, when it comes to this, this is basically a bill destined to go after the working class of our island, the people that do their best to get by but can't afford to rent a hall. They can't afford to rent a hotel ballroom or something to have their functions. So to take away a person's vehicle on this island is paramount to taking away their livelihood. I mean, how would somebody that's making $20,000 a year, which is the majority of our population or below, survive and have enough funds to get a new vehicle? It's literally insane, and it's a completely draconian thing to even have in the bill in the first place. I rise in full support of this amendment. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard on the Ogun Amendment deleting Section 6 and 7? Are there any objections to the amendment? The chair hearing, no objections, so ordered. Senator Ogun, you're recognized again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you to our colleagues for supporting that particular amendment. Mr. Speaker, I do have another amendment that was circulated just a minute ago, and I did share with you perhaps one of the things that we should make applicable in Guam's public park system is that in playground areas, there's absolutely no need to bring alcohol within a certain distance within that particular playground. And this one, I guess, it's subjective in terms of looking at 50 feet perimeter, but this would redefine the alcohol-free zone means the 50 feet perimeter of playgrounds, and then it will continue on and any other area within the Guam Territory Park System as designated by the Director of Department of Parks and Recreation. I think that we need to, in this particular case, if this provision, should this provision pass into law, that there be an outright restriction in terms of the consumption of alcohol within that restricted distance. So I ask our colleagues for their consideration as to apply to this amendment. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Any senators wish to be heard on the Ogun Amendment on the 50 feet perimeter? Senator Panglinen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'm just a little confused. If we're defining an alcohol-free zone, so that means basically there are no alcohol-free parks? So that if there's no playground in the park, there shall be no, it can't be designated as an alcohol-free park because there's no, the zone is now limited to, if that's the way it's written, I'm not sure. I'm just asking the construction, how this is constructed, and what does this mean in that respect? Where we're now defining an alcohol-free zone means this 50-foot perimeter. What if there's no park, playground? And so that's the question I have. How does it affect the idea of alcohol-free parks?
Senator Ogun, do you wish to yield to that question?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you very much to our colleague from Baragada. I think he brings up a legitimate concern. The way I was looking at it is using hypothetically the Epa Beach Park as an example. If in fact that was not, is not designated as an alcohol-free park, then that particular playground within Epa Beach or Governor Joseph Flores Beach Park, that that particular playground would be, or would be designated as an alcohol-free zone area within 50 feet of that facility or that recreational area. So that, unless the good senator from Baragada has a different way to clarify the presentation, that is the intent. It's not necessarily to look at an alcohol-free park and saying, "Okay, there's a playground in there, that's alcohol-free," which is, which really does not make any sense, and I understand his concern. But that's how I proffer the language, recognizing that any other parks that have a playground, that there would be an added restriction, it would be recognized as an alcohol-free zone within 50 feet of the perimeter of that public park or public playground. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Palacios, do you wish, would you be willing to yield to the question that was raised by Senator Panglinen? Does the law currently already provide for authority by the Director of Parks and Recreation to designate whole parks as alcohol-free anyway? And this is just to expand this? I thought that was something you said earlier.
Yes, of course, under the general provision that the Department of Parks and Recreation shall promulgate rules and regulations for the administration and regulation of the parks and the beaches under its jurisdiction. So just like I said, based on that general provision, that that's how he was able to designate for a pilot project at least seven beaches. And with respect to some of these sports, the gym, I have no reason to not believe that he can, that can also be designated under that general authority. he can, that can also be designated under that general authority.
Senator Pangolinan, does that help clarify your concerns, or do you wish to pose a more, a different question? Does any other senator wish to be heard on the Ogden Amendment on the 50-feet perimeter amendment? Senator Espaldón, and then Senator Director.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, if I may call for a brief recess, because I too have a problem with the statutory construction in terms of the wording, and it may be misleading or misconstrued if it's ever challenged. So if I could just take a couple seconds with the author of this amendment to make sure that we can articulate in writing exactly what he's trying to accomplish.
The court will take a short recess.
Mr. Speaker, and thank you for our colleagues' patience. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to withdraw my original amendment, and there's another version that would encompass some of the concerns expressed by our colleagues that's going around, and it would read, alcohol-free zone means children's playgrounds and 25 feet from the perimeter of the playgrounds and any other area within the Guam territorial park system. So that's how it would read. Do you have a copy, Mr. Speaker?
I'm sorry, but our clerk is asking, where is it? Um, are the, okay. Are you ready? Okay, thank you. The clerk has it now. All right, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
When she says she doesn't have it, I have to jump.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, but that's the proposed amendment, and I ask our colleagues for their consideration. Basically, there's a couple of concerns that were brought up. One is the perimeter of the playgrounds. What exactly is the definition of the perimeter of the playgrounds? And so it was reworded to read as stated, that I highlighted a little earlier. And it also wanted, I also, another concern mentioned by our colleagues is that this really should be applicable to the children's playgrounds, because for example, in Epa Beach, there is a volleyball court there. Now, would that fall under the category of playground? And that is not the intent of the amendment, Mr. Speaker. It's more or less the children's playground to restrict it within 25 feet. And in recognition of a wonderful playground facility within the village of Paragada, which is located very, in very close proximity to the mayor's office and to the community center there, if we went with the original language of 50 feet from the perimeter of the playground, I think we'd be getting numerous calls, because there would be a line of demarcation right there in the middle of that community center, anytime there's a party there. So I wanted to make that clarification, and I want to thank our colleagues for their input. And also, and one other concern, Mr. Speaker, that was brought up, it says here, as the line continues and any other area within the Guam territorial park system. So it does not, some parks may be located adjacent to residential areas. This is applicable to the Guam territorial park properties, and it does not delineate into private residential areas. So I wanted to provide that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I ask our colleagues for their consideration.
Thank you very much. Senator Espaldón, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Again, with the explanation given by the mover of this amendment, if I could just make an amendment to this amendment, and right before the word "children," if we just put "public" children's playground, that way we delineate from private playgrounds or playgrounds that may be in private subdivisions or condominium areas and whatnot. And I say that because I live in a condominium, and there is a public playground, but within 25 feet is the barbecue area and whatnot. So again, if we just want to make sure that there is no misinterpretation of this, that we just put before the word "children's playground," we put "public children's playground," I think that will address that situation. So I make that amendment.
On the amendment, anybody object? Oh, wait, okay, I see two hands went up. First Senator Rector, and then Senator Pangolinan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. While I appreciate the intent of the amendment to the amendment, I don't think it's necessary, because this clearly specifies children's playgrounds within the Guam territorial park system. Thereby, unless we have private playgrounds within the Guam territorial park system, which if we do, somebody better give me a call, because I'm going to raise cane about it, all parks that apply, all children's playgrounds will be public playgrounds. So I think that's a superfluous amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator Director. Senator Pangolinan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'm just playing a frustrated non-attorney here that's going to give a legal opinion, and the legal opinion I'm going to give is that the controlling language of the location of these facilities are within the Guam territorial park system. So I could not envision ever a private children's playground being existing in a Guam territorial public park system. So that clarification is not necessary, because it would clarify something that doesn't exist. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Espaldón.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Actually, after reading the bill in its entirety one more time, the previous speaker is correct. It does address only parks within the territorial, the Department of Parks and Recreation territorial park system. So I will withdraw that amendment.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on the Ogden Amendment? Senator Rector, then Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would like to make an amendment to the I would like to make an amendment to the amendment, and that is to delete the words starting at, the underlying language, starting at the word "and" and going all the way to the end of playgrounds. So that now it would say alcohol-free zone means children's playgrounds and any other blah, 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 to remove the 25 foot from the perimeter. And if I might speak on that?
Please.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, my concern is, I understand, we don't want, we don't want alcohol where kids are playing in the playground. Okay, I can live with that, and that kind of makes sense to me to a certain extent. But the problem is, is there's nothing else in the bill saying that these, these zones will be posted. There's, and the way our parks are set up, I think we're just setting people up. It's darn near entrapment. I mean, imagine if someone's walking from their car to their picnic site with a cooler. Well, if they happen to walk through this 25-foot zone, they can be ticketed. I think, oh, no, we got rid of the car impounding. I was going to say, they might impound their car. It's a, it, that, it's just bad, bad agenda. I understand the need for it. I mean, I understand why we want to, like, prohibit it in children's playgrounds, but setting up arbitrarily invisible zones around it just leads to difficulty. And I, and I would say if, if I was a parent, I would probably want to put my picnic site up as close to the playground as possible so that while my kids are playing, my family and I can enjoy our picnic and still keep an eye on our kids. And we don't want people to, to move their picnic site specifically away from the children's playground for just that reason. So, thank you.
On the Rector Amendment, anybody wish to be heard? The Rector Amendment is to remove the words "and the 25 feet from the perimeter of the playgrounds and..." Anybody wish to be heard? There any objection to the Rector Amendment? Senator Tiedegui?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, I'm just not quite, I really don't understand this section. I mean, if you were able to, I mean, I believe that you should have the ability to be able to set your picnic area near where the kids are at, but if this is an alcohol-free zone, then why would you be carrying alcohol in your cooler? So I don't understand, maybe shed some light on this because if we're designating this as the alcohol-free zone in the playgrounds and 25 feet perimeter of the playground, then is this pertaining to, maybe the author can, can help me on this with regards to this?
Does anybody wish to yield Senator Tiedegui's question? The mover, Senator Rector.
Oh, Senator, okay.
Thank you. It's my understanding that from the original amendment, some, it says that whether a park is alcohol-free or not alcohol-free, every playground within a public park will be alcohol-free. And so if you're going to the public park, then you, you're legally unable to bring, to bring alcohol into the park, but not in the playground. So my amendments, if you're going from your car to the park and you happen to go through this invisible zone, you won't be in violation of the law.
Okay, I understand a little bit more, but I have to stand in objection only because if you, if it says that in the law that you cannot go in an area with alcohol in 25 feet of the playground, why then would you pass through the playground with the alcohol in there when it's illegal in the first place? To object.
Thank you, Senator Tiedegui. Any other speakers? Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you very much. I don't know why you would do it, but I know that if I asked you, "How many feet is it exactly from here to there?" You couldn't tell me within a foot. So it's, it's almost arbitrary and it's vague. We say 25, but how are we going to determine that? Is it going to be marked? Is it going to be signed? Is it going to be a yellow rope around it? So that, you know, so that you're walking your child to the playground, and you happen to have a can of beer in your hand with a nice cooler that doesn't show it's a beer, you know, because it's an alcohol-free park, and that zone is going to be alcohol-free, but you want to keep it cold? And, you know, it's your only beer for the day because you want to make sure you can watch your kid? And then you step into 19 feet, but you can't tell because you don't have a tape measure with you, and there's no sign. So in that respect, it may be vague. And can you enforce vague laws? Well, it just make, wastes a lot of time, you know? So if we're going to stake it out, put a rope around it and say, "The park plus this 25-foot square around," okay, maybe. But it is this idea that, you know, we're getting carried away. I mean, we're getting to the point where, while we're trying to clarify things, we're allowing for vagueness to creep into the law, and therefore it becomes unimplementable and unenforceable. So, yeah, you step into the sandbox, bang, you're out of there, you know? But you're within 25 feet, four inches of the sandbox? How are we going to determine that? So that, to me, makes the thing so vague that it becomes unenforceable, and therefore it doesn't achieve what we want it to achieve. So in that respect, I understand why the amendment's being made, and I support it. Thank you.
Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of the objection, which is retaining the 25 feet. And, Mr. Speaker, while we may not know exactly whether from here to there is 25 feet, at some point, we can be sure whether it's less than 25 or it's more than 25. For example, from where I stand to my office, I know for a fact that it's more than 25 feet. And instances like that, there can be no argument. Now, if it's a matter within a foot, I don't think that the law really expects that it'd be down to the millimeter. So for purpose of deterrence and enforcement, and for purpose of signaling the enforcement officers whether there is a violation, we would know that from here to where Senator Frank Uggan stands is less than 25 feet. But from here to my office, I know it's more than 25 feet. And on that basis, I think it has, it has validity to retain the, you know, the so-called, not so, not necessarily arbitrary, but, but the designation of the 25 feet. If nothing else, at least to give a signal to the enforcement officer whether there is indeed a sure violation or not. And I know that enforcement officers, when they're not sure, then the likelihood is that they would not enforce it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. Any other senators before I go back to Senator Rector?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I too stand in supporting the existing language, Mr. Speaker. I think that when, when you look at the internal portions of the playground, the children's playground, obviously, I think it makes common sense that we shouldn't be taking alcohol into that particular area. But then allowing for a buffer to be established within that children's playground reemphasizes the importance of, hey, this is an alcohol-free area within 25 feet of the edge of the perimeter of the children's playground, and you need to be able to acknowledge that first and foremost. And I don't think we're going to have park rangers or law enforcement officials going out there, being ticketing hungry, so to speak, and just arbitrarily saying, "Hey, I'm sorry, you're not in compliance, you're within 24 feet of the children's playground." I would presume that in their ability and their, their treatment of many of our people island-wide over the course of the last several years, I mean, the reality is, they're going to say, "Excuse me, I'm sorry, you are within this particular perimeter." Maybe what's lacking in this legislation, Mr. Speaker, is a signage that will so designate these areas so that in fact people understand. And obviously, if a signage is going to be placed in, within the 25-feet allowance distance, then it would be within that particular area, notifying people that within 25 feet of the playground, children's playground, I'm sorry, there is alcohol-free designation and there's outright restriction in terms of consuming or carrying alcohol containers within that area. So I stand in support of the existing language. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Tiedegui?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just, just one other thing before he closes on his amendment. I'm a parent. I have my children playing at a park, and I know this is alcohol-free. I feel a little bit safe knowing that, feel a whole lot safe knowing that. And I don't care if somebody comes in with a can of beer, walking across the park. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. What are we teaching our children? That we can bend the law? Now, when people drink, and there's signs, tons of signs out there saying, "Be responsible. Be responsible." And if you can drink a can of beer, then you sure know how to measure. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Any other senators wish to be heard? If not, Senator Rector, do you wish to close on your amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, you know, there, there's something about this, this whole bill, and as you know, like, I, I'm kind of, I have problems with the bill in general. But in general, this, this bill, what we're, what we're doing is, we have a set of park rangers that are underfunded and understaffed, and so we're setting up new rules and regulations and laws that encourages them to go out and give tickets because whenever they give a ticket, it'll put the money back to buying them equipment. So what we're doing is, we're setting up a scenario that it's almost like in Los Angeles, when I used to live there, police officers had a quota. They had to go out and give X number of tickets every day, and they would find any way to do it. It made no difference what happened in court, whether it got beaten or not beaten, they met their quota. In this case, you're going to give an incentive to all these law enforcement officers. It's like, hey, you want a new car? Go and get more tickets. Now, come on, do we want to put anybody in that situation? Do we want to put our park rangers in a situation where they're actively going out and going after our families? I, I don't think so. And realistically, some people might know 25 feet. Hey, maybe you do. Maybe you've got good depth perception and good spatial awareness, but I know plenty people that don't. And maybe even I don't. Am I 25 feet away from you, sir? I really couldn't tell you. And I thought, think I got fairly decent spatial perception. We need to be careful what we do. What might seem good on the surface, and we can drape it in all sorts of great things like it's protecting our children, that's always a happy thought, and protecting our families, which is a great thought, but this doesn't do this. All it does is it gives officers incentive to, to write tickets to the working class of our island, the people that use our public parks. Thank you, sir.
I understand that there's been an objection by one of the senators. Can I have all the senators in the hall for a few, for a vote, please? Just on whether or not this amendment passes? The amendment to the amendment. The Rector Amendment is to remove the words "and the 25 feet from the perimeter of the All those in favor of the Rector Amendment, please raise your hand. The amendment fails. On the main amendment by Senator Frank Uggan, as contained in the written amendment that's on the floor, are there any objections? There is an objection. All those in favor of the Uggan Amendment, please raise your hand. The amendment passes. Thank you, Senator Rector. Did you say you had another amendment after this? All right, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for, for the patience of our colleagues. I apologize because I know that I've been trying to incorporate a number of amendments, but I've been listening internally to some of the concerns that have been stated. And, Mr. Speaker, I think just to enhance the proposal, we certainly need to be able to, to try to improve upon what we have before us. I have an amendment that I think rightfully so should require the AAA process, Administrative Adjudication Act process to be utilized anytime that there's a designation of a alcohol-free zone. So my amendment, Mr. Speaker, if I may, on line 20, would be to delete the words "to designate certain beaches and public park areas in the..." So that first sentence would only read as a title of that subsection, Guam territorial park system as an alcohol-free zone. And in conjunction with that, on line 22, after the word "effective," to incorporate the word designation, and then comma. So the entire sentence, Mr. Speaker, would read Guam territorial park system as an alcohol-free zone, period. The director shall develop policies and procedures for the effective designation, comma, implementation and administration of alcohol-free zones in accordance with the Administrative Adjudication Act. I think this is very critical anytime that the director is going to be empowered, which perhaps he already has that authority, but to go through this public process so that in fact the community is given that opportunity to be able to comment on that designation or that proposed designation. So, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move for that, and then the community service component, I would like to propose later. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Does everybody understand the Uggan Amendment? Are there any, does anybody wish to speak on the Uggan Amendment? Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I spoke earlier, of course, about putting the cart before the horse, and I think this kind of gets the horse, at least the rear end, further up from the cart. So we're getting there, and I'm very concerned about that. Again, I was concerned because the bill allowed the director to say, "That park is alcohol-free," and then we require him to solicit public input to say, "How can we implement that?" Not whether we should implement it, not whether it is alcohol-free, is now that it's alcohol-free, how do we implement it? You know, so it imposes a power on that with no public input that that park will be alcohol-free. So that the mayors don't have a voice, the public doesn't have a voice, nobody has a voice except the director who says, "I have decided this park will be alcohol-free. Now let's see how we can make it work." It shouldn't be that way. It should be, "I am saying and proposing that this be alcohol-free. How does this affect the community, the enforcement, the traffic, the history? All of the things that we said he's going to do and that we trust that he will do, he doesn't have to." Now with this process here, then he has to outline what's his rationale on why a park should be designated alcohol-free? Is it because I don't drink and, and my friends don't drink and we love that park? You know, we all want to go there, and we all don't want to deal with the rest of the public, even though they are, because we don't agree with drinking. It is my, like, other bills that are being debated, because I don't agree with that, I don't want anybody else to have it, you know? So, because I don't drink and my friends don't drink and we love that park, nobody else can come to that park except me and my friends and those of us who don't drink. Even though we got people who may only drink one because they want to watch the sunset. It's the best place on the island for the sunset, and all I want to do is drive in there on a, after a hard day's work with one cold beer, be able to sit down and watch that sunset. But now the Department of Parks director can unilaterally, literally, unilaterally say, "Nobody gets to go there with a bottle of beer and watch that beautiful sunset," because I don't like it. We don't know, or for whatever reason, or the governor wants to be able to go there and, and be able to not be bothered by anybody who may want to ask him a question, you know? We are getting to the point where things that make our island special are going to be reserved only for people in power and people that are connected. And, yeah, you're saying, "Oh, there you go again." Absolutely. We've seen this thing happen through our entire government. People who have connections get special treatment. Now we're going to extend it to the use of our public facilities for that those people in power and the authority to do so, at the behest of their appointing authority, can say, "You can't go there." And, and we can't even ask why. And, and we can't even ask why. We can't even ask him, "What's the rationale?" Or if we do, it doesn't matter, because he can do it without any public input. Now, this amendment kind of puts a little bit of control back into the people of having a say in how the resources of our government that are made available for public use and public benefit are going to be managed. You know? Too many times, I think, while we're trying to say, we're trying to be fair, we're being unfair also. And it's too often that we're only going to be fair to those that we agree with, and we're, the fact that we don't agree with somebody, tough. Tough. We don't even want to listen to you. And that's how this bill was constructed, until this just changed right now. It's exactly what I articulated during the public hearing, but I guess I wasn't connected or whatever, but nobody listens to me anyway. So, it didn't change at all, because why? Because the powers that be want that power. They want the power to shut the public out. I, I voiced this concern, nothing. It didn't get amended, it didn't get changed. It's like, it's okay, because why? Because we don't agree that the public should have a say, that the mayor should have a say, in which parks are designated alcohol-free or not. Not whether they should be or not, but whether or not they can be designated. We just wanted to give it to the guy who we agree with, because he believes the same things we do. Well, the public interest is not about unanimity and 100% agreement. The public interest is about protecting the rights of minorities, too. And what we're doing, and what we did in this bill, was we weren't going to listen to anybody else who has a dissenting opinion. It didn't matter. No public input, no public process to get that in prior to the decision being made, unless we happen to meet the Director at Payless, or Cowal's Insurance, where we're paying our insurance bill, or Payless Shoe Store, or GPO, unless we happen to meet him there, and he wants to talk to us. If he doesn't want to talk to us, when we meet him there, he doesn't have to listen. This process puts in the mandatory requirement that when we're going to make a public, a decision and implement public policy that affects the public's rights and interests, that they will, by operation of law, have the right to say what they feel, say what they think, and try to implement, influence the process and the decision and the policy. And that's what was missing from this bill, and I think that this amendment here, in my prior discussion, which I pointed out to the good senator, because he is in good terms with the author, so, he's not going to object to the amendment. They're good friends, you know? So, and he told me he was, I was right, and that he was going to do something about it. So, I thank him for doing something about it, because I think that now I'm getting closer to being able to support this process, because it involves the community, and it protects the community's right to voice their opinion on the implementation and proposal of public policy that affects the resources that are available in the recreational facilities. You know, that's right, people go to parks for many different reasons. One of the best reasons is, you can't afford to pay that $200 or $300 tab at a hotel. I mean, there are many reasons. Some want it because they just want to enjoy the beach, and they're not about getting drunk. You know? We are painting a, a picture of, God, if we don't have these alcohol-free zones, we're going to have drunkards running all over our parks. Our island is not full of drunkards. So, we're trying to solve a small problem with a big policy that impacts all the others. I mean, I bring up this example, and I brought it up, East of Ganya Bay. I understand all the rationale, but you tell me, they're saying it so, so it can be safe. You tell me, give me the statistics that say there have been zero crashes of people pulling out of that park in the middle of the day or in the middle of the night, because we now have an alcohol-free zone there, and nobody, so now it's totally safe. It's totally clean. It isn't. This was not the solution to a problem, you know? Yet, I'll tell you, East of Ganya Bay is one of the most beautiful spots on Guam to watch a sunset. It's free, it's nice, it's even kind of a contrast between the modern-day Guam and the old Guam, because you have traffic rushing behind you, but you have the tranquility and the peacefulness of the ocean, and the beautiful colors of the sunset. And you can sit there and have one beer and go home, and perfectly not affect anybody's life. But you can't do it now, even though there's, there's no statistics that prove that all of the accidents of people pulling out of that park were drunk, and that's why we want to make it drunk, you know? That's why we want to make it alcohol-free, because everybody that goes there is drunk, and when they pull out, they kill somebody, or they had caused an accident. That's, that's the explanation I heard of why we want to do that there. Yet, nothing to back it up. It's all just, I don't know why. I, you know, it, it kind of makes sense, maybe it is preventive, but where were the statistics before that, that have shown such a huge reduction, that have prevented these kind of things? It's not there. It's, I think, because, you know, we want to protect the access to that, to just the type of people that we like. You know? And nobody likes a drunk. Some people love them, but nobody likes them. You know, and you love them because you love them for all the other reasons. But nobody likes a drunk. Nobody wants a drunk next to their picnic. Nobody wants a drunk next to their children. You know, but is the solution then to say, "Nobody can go there, even when you're not drunk"? Next thing you know, there's going to be an amendment here. If you get two tickets in the, in the park for drinking, you're going to be banned from the park. I'm telling you. I'm telling you, I can see it coming. You know? Believe me, because you know why? Because we've seen it in other laws, and we think we're solving a problem. The solution to that is, open up new beginnings and put him into an alcohol rehab program. You know? Have it in the park. See what he's, tell him, see what he's missing. But, again, let's, let's make sure that we're not putting in place policies that are going to just advance those things that we can only agree with, and not take into account the entire community that we serve. And again, I'm not for letting drunks wander around in our parks, but I'm for, call a cop, have them come and take him out of there. You know? That'll solve that problem real quick. So, in this regard, in the amendment, at least it safeguards the public's right to comment and to try and influence policy when decisions are being made that are going to affect their access to public facilities. And I support the amendment made by Senator Uggan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinen. Senator Palacios, no? Are there any other speakers on the Uggan amendment? Is there an objection to the Uggan amendment? The chair is seeing no objection to the amendment. The amendment passes. Go ahead. I think you have one more, and then Senator Palacios.
Thank you, senators, for your consideration of that, and I assure you, this is my last amendment. And then whether it passes is, is up to the body. Mr. Speaker, you know, when I look at Section 5, the imposition of penalties and fines, I think one of the concerns that was raised a little earlier is that the initial implementation of $150 for not compliance may be a little bit excessive. I also, I agree, but I'm not going to propose to amend that particular figure. The concern I have is that when you leave a window of between $150, but no more than $500, how is the park ranger going to decide exactly how, what range? Okay, I'm feeling like $250 today, so I'm going to charge everyone, or penalize everyone $250 who do not comply with this law? Should it become law? So, I do have a serious concern about providing that discretionary authority. So, my amendment, Mr. Speaker, and also in conjunction with that, not everyone has, within their, their immediate reach, $150 to pay for a fine or a penalty. I think that there should really be a component here that would allow for community service within a restricted timeframe. So, I would like to propose, Mr. Speaker, for the consideration of the body, that for all of the provisions in subsection A, B, and C, that right after the initial amount, or amounts of $1 to $150, that we delete the subsequent phrase, "But no more than," whatever that amount is, $500, and insert a comma, "and/or equivalent community service to include part cleanup slash maintenance." I will prepare that in writing, if in fact you would like to, to get that in writing, Mr. Speaker, but it would delete in subsections A, B, and C, will just keep that initial figure that would be assessed as a penalty, and delete the subsequent phrase, "But no more than $500," which is a duplicate of each subsection, and then insert comma, "and/or equivalent community service to include part cleanup slash maintenance," period. Because I think that this provides at least the park ranger and, and the Department of Parks and Recreation, the flexibility of, you will be fined $150. If you're, you're not able to come up with the $150, or the $250, or whatever that amount is, then you are obligated to give back to this community, and you will be charged with maintaining this park as part of your community service. So, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to ask for the consideration of our colleagues.
Does everybody understand the amendment? Does anybody need it in writing? There being no need for it to be in writing, I understand. Senator Blash, you wish to be heard on this?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, although I agree with the, my colleague from, my primo from Zonia, with regards to providing some flexibility here to utilize, you know, community service in lieu of, of cash payment, I think it's necessary, although, and I can see his point about not being able to pay at least $150, but if you remove the language that says, "But no more than $500," recognizing, though, that this is not a, this is not the decision of the, of the individual providing the citation, more so the decision of the, of the individual sitting at the bench that's going to make that ruling. You remove that, where it puts a cap on the total amount that, you know, that, that could be, that the, that can be imposed. So, although I agree that we, we, you know, let's give some flexibility and provide the community service, I'm not too sure we want to remove that, that, that ceiling as to, you know, the, the maximum amount that can be imposed.
Thanks, Senator Blash. Senator Uggan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, primo. I think, Mr. Speaker, if I refer back to the previous section, it says, in line 6, "shall be in violation of this provision and shall be issued a citation and punished in accordance with the subsequent section." And I'm under the impression, just by virtue of reading this, and I may be mistaken, that the territorial park patrol, park rangers, or the Guam Police Department officers have that discretion to cite these individuals, unless this goes back before the judge, then, then if that's the case, then the discretionary authority before the bench is very appropriate.
I think the next sentence says that the decision is the judge's. The citation is issued by the park ranger, but the decision on the fine is a judge's, or the new magistrate, if we get to vote on him this afternoon. Can we take just a two-second break, I mean, recess, and, and please try to work this
Okay, the legislature's back in session. Senator Speaker, you're recognized for a motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, it appears that the reason why we're called for recess might require the gentleman to work this out over lunch, but in the meantime, I move for a notwithstanding motion that we suspend discussion on Bill 151. Proceed to the voting file, and then revert back to the second reading file, where we take up discussion on 151.
So, on that motion, without any objections, since ordered. Where's the calendar? Where's the agenda? Okay, so can the clerk read the first person and the, um, yes. Number three and number five.
On the appointment of Mr. Joseph D. Lopez Sr. to serve as a chairman, counsel, and post-secondary institution certification.
On the confirmation then of Mr. Lopez, all those in favor, please raise your hand. It says chairman, counsel on post-secundaries.
The membership was withdrawn.
Yes, I think it does. Yeah, we have, let me see, we do have the confirmation of a letter on. Yes, there was, there were two letters that were sent. One was for a member and one for chairman, and then the member was withdrawn. So it's the chairman that stayed. Senator Espicio.
Madam Speaker, can we suspend the vote on this nominee and proceed to the other while we iron out some issues that were raised?
So on that motion then, without any objection, sort it. Okay, so on the appointment, on the appointment of Mr. Alberto E. Tolentino to serve as magistrate judge, judiciary of Guam. All those in favor, please. Yes. So we're gonna, we're gonna do a roll call, roll call vote then.
Upon me, Mr. Alberto E. Tolentino to serve as magistrate judge, judiciary of Guam.
Roll call.
Senator Ada.
Yes.
Senator Ogun.
Yes.
Senator Blas. Senator Calvo. Senator Cruz.
Aye.
Senators Pao Don.
Yes.
Senator Guthers.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Oh, yeah.
Senator Palacios.
Aye.
Senator Penglinen.
Yes.
Senator Rector.
Yes.
Senator Espicio.
Aye.
Senator Taitiri.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampin.
Yes.
Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Calvo. Before we announce the vote.
I'd just like to motion to excuse Senator Tenorio from voting this morning.
On that motion then, without any objection.
There was, again, making a motion to recuse Senator Tenorio.
Okay, on that motion, without any objections, so order it. On the appointment then of Mr. Alberto E. Tolentino to serve as magistrate judge of the judiciary of Guam. There are fourteen yays and one excused absence. Mr. Tolentino is duly confirmed by this panel. While we get the other information for the other, you're right, we need to go back because, please make a motion and then.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Nowwithstanding the House rules, I then move that we revert back to the second reading file to take up discussions on Bill 151-30 and then recess till two o'clock.
Okay, on that motion then, without any objections, then we're gonna recess until two o'clock this afternoon.
The legislature is back in session. The chair recognizes Senator Uggan for an amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. In consultation with a number of our colleagues and then also with the assistance of the legal counsel, I'd like to withdraw the original amendment and proffer the one that you have before you which would reemphasize. And I understand, Mr. Speaker, that there's been statements made that, in fact, it may already be in the code. But I think that any time that we're providing information to the citizens of the community, at times it's always helpful that they understand what avenues may be available to them in terms of being able to give back to the community should they not be in compliance with this provision of law should it pass. So I'd like to propose the following statements, Mr. Speaker. Add the following, and yes, this is my last amendment to this bill. Add the following to subsection A, subsection B, subsection C of 771 or 4.2 in section five to read as follows. Any credit for community service against the fine imposed shall be given at any hourly rate that equals or exceeds the minimum wage prevailing in the territory of Guam. And I think it's very important that as this is implemented, that at least when representatives of the government provide information to our people and say, "Take a look at this particular public law," that they would understand that perhaps there's an alternative other than a financial penalty to be able to repay the community should an offense be committed. So I ask our colleagues for their consideration. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. Senator Taidigui, did you have a comment you wish to make?
Mr. Speaker, not really. I just happened to look at this and notice that this is exactly an issue that I had earlier with regards to imposing the community service with fines. Because at this point, I have a bill that is ready to be, hopefully, at a committee and brought to the session floor and voted on to actually address this particular situation where now that the minimum wage has increased, that it should reflect the community service as well as increasing in that respect. So I just was noticing this. I'm in favor, definitely support this amendment, and hope that when my bill does come to the session, that it will address all the scenarios that have to deal with community service fines being implemented. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Taidigui. Senator Director, did you say you wished to speak on this?
Well, I never pass up the opportunity to speak on one of Senator Uggan's amendments because they're just so darn good. Yes, you know, and I will. I'm not going to oppose this amendment, but we go down a very slippery slope when we do this. And let me explain why. When we talk about a fee and then community service in lieu, which is not what this thing does, but it allows how the fee is set, or how the community service is set if the judge decides to allow a community service in lieu of it. The problem is, is let's say, for instance, that you're one of the majority of people that work on Guam, which means you're earning right around $10 an hour, all right? Now, for you, if you're given a $150 fine, that's worth 15 hours of work for you. Gross, not even net, 15 hours of gross for $150. But let's say you're, I better not use attorneys, they get mad when I pick on them. Let's say you're a dentist or a doctor. I recently saw that doctors are making about $250 an hour, so it's not even an hour's worth for you. What we're doing is we're setting up a dual standard. It's a very regressive policy when all of a sudden we say, "Poor folks, well, you can't afford to pay the fine because you don't earn enough. But the rich folks who are your boss, which is the reason you aren't earning enough, it's nothing, it's chump change, it's water off of their back." All right? If we're going to do this, if you want our parks clean, make it so everybody has to do community service and the exact same amount. I wouldn't mind seeing some of these folks that don't look like they've ever gotten their hands dirty out, knowing what it's like to work for a living, for a change. Now, that's an amendment I could appreciate. But as far as this goes, I really have trouble whenever we set it a regressive and the working man and the working woman are paying the burden and carrying the burden of keeping our parks clean and keeping the burden of keeping our parks open and paying the burden of keeping our public structure open, well as those that can most afford to pay, don't. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Director. Anybody else wish to speak on the Uggan amendment? Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'm trying to understand the rationale for this, number one, or first, the necessity of it, because community service when imposed by the judge has its own set of rules. It's all set there. And number two is, what is it for? And under which circumstance would one be tagged to that his hours only count as minimum wage and this person's hour is going to count at 25 bucks an hour? How does one decide that? What are the parameters for making that decision? Or are we saying in this amendment that the judge or the community service for all of this is either at minimum wage or exceeds the minimum wage? When does it do so? Is it one or the other? Or is it different for every single individual that comes before the judge? And I don't know, you know, if that's our intent. And again, I go back to, "Well, you know, I see you in church on Sunday, so your community service is going to be tagged at, you know, $30 an hour because I see you reaching your pocket and put into the limousine." So therefore, I'm going to give you credit for that, credit your hour at 50 bucks an hour, so you only have to do five hours of community service. But the other guy, I see him come in late to church and never reach into his pocket and put into the limousine, so I'm going to give him a minimum wage, so he has to work 20 hours to pay off that fine, yet it's the same dollar fine. So again, you know, I understand what we're, no, I don't understand, I won't say it. I just don't understand why we're trying to do it this way without the clarity that is needed in order to make sure it's implemented fairly. And that I know what I'm going to be voting on and how it's going to be carried out. I can't see it. I can't convince myself to see how this can, what's the rationale and when it will occur and whose time is worth more? And is the judge going to make that decision based upon what criteria and everything else? So it should be just one thing, and that is, all community service, everyone shall be credited at minimum wage, period. That would be kind of fair and easy to understand. Thank you.
Senator Uggan, do you wish to yield to the question of explaining what this is about?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I don't know if the good Mr. Speaker from Baragada was requesting for a response because this particular provision is taken out of the existing code, so maybe we need to go back and revisit that existing code. But to accommodate his suggestion or his hint at making an appropriate amendment, I think it would be proper at this time to just make it equate to the minimum wage prevailing in Guam. So if I can suggest that the following words be deleted of the phrase that is before you, Mr. Speaker and Senators. Any hourly rate that equals, delete or exceeds, and delete the territory of, because that would be consistent with existing law that refrains from referencing territory as opposed to just island of Guam or Guam. So it would now read, "Any credit for community service against the fine imposed shall be given at any hourly rate that equals the minimum wage prevailing in Guam." So an amendment to the amendment, please, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Does anybody wish to speak on this new amendment? Senator Taidigui, you look like you want, no? All right. Is there any objection to this amendment? No objection? Thank you. Are there any other speakers who wish to speak on Bill 151?
No, I have an amendment. I have an amendment.
Oh, okay. On the amended amendment, any objections?
No.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other speakers on Bill 151 before we go to, did you want to do closing, Senator?
No.
You have an amendment? Oh, okay. Then Senator Palacios is recognized for an amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I have my amendment passed out already since before lunch, and I would like to proffer an amendment to section three on line 23 after the word "act," period. Add a new sentence to read. Alcohol-free zone, in quotation, alcohol-free zone designation shall not exceed more than 20% of the combined total of beaches and parks under the jurisdiction of the Department of Parks and Recreation. And if I may just comment, Mr. Speaker, I do not agree that 50% or even 30% of the parks be designated as alcohol-free zone. But 20% of 70 probably would get up to 14. Right now, there are seven on Pilot Project. And of course, in my closing remark, I'll point out some of the benefits that have been realized because of that. But this would then set a limit of not more than 20% of the combined total of beaches and parks may be designated alcohol-free zone. And that's my amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thanks, Senator Palacios. Anybody wish to speak on Senator Palacios's amendment? Senator Director, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. First, I'm quickly looking at an amendment on this, just so we can figure it out. When we say 20%, we usually like to specify what we're talking about. 20% of the number of beaches or 20% of the total area of the beaches? So let me pass that as a question to the maker of the amendment. Senator Palacios, do you yield?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I understand the question. And that is 20% of the combined total of beaches and parks. So in the case, for example, of Epaol Beach, that's just one. Padre Palomo, that's another one. So under the inventory of the Department of Parks based on testimony, 70, a total of 70 combined parks and beaches are right now under their jurisdiction. So it is not reference to the size, 20% of the size of a beach, but 20% meaning 20 of parks and beaches. Not more than 20 may be designated alcohol-free zone. No, no, not more than 14 of 70, because right now there are 70. And so 20%, and if any number will grow, then 100 would constitute then 20 beaches out of the 100. And that is my proposal, is so that we do not designate more than 20% of the total combined beaches. And so existing now is 70. That means 14 would be available for designation, seven of which are already on Pilot Project. The remaining, I think, if this is to pass into law, then the Department of Parks and Recreation may only now designate alcohol-free zone, seven more. And of course, according to the public hearing on AAA process.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. So Senator Director, does that assist you in your, or do you have further questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. It does explain that. And for that reason, I would think this needs to be clarified. And yet, I think I would prefer having 14 more of our beaches and parks classified as alcohol-free zones doesn't quite, it seems to me like that's a fairly significant amount. So let me try and put in an amendment to insert the word "area" in between the words "total" and "of." So it now would read, "Of the combined total area of beaches and parks under the jurisdiction of DPR." I mean, if you take into account, like, because we're, and if I can speak on it.
Please.
Thank you. If we take into account that, I understand what folks are doing here. We're saying, "Look, we want to designate a certain portion of our parks as alcohol-free zones for whatever reason." And I'm still not quite sure if anybody's ever given us a good reason why we're going to do it that's backed up with data or reasonable statistics. But that being said, I understand designating a certain part of our beaches for an alcohol-free zone. But for instance, we have some parks that are very small, and yet we have some parks that are giant. For instance, if you designated Epaol Beach Park as an alcohol-free zone, the total square footage of that park will be very significant. Whereas if you take one of the little parks, like, I don't know, like the Baragada Mayor's Office, which is a fairly small park, that wouldn't be anywhere close in the same size. And to count them as equal in a number, like the number of parks, doesn't seem fair or justifiable to me. And whereas if we say "area," where at least we have a fair and even balance, and somebody can do the math, and that way if they're designating, they put like a whole bunch of playgrounds, which we have already designated as alcohol-free zones by previous amendment, this will take into account the area and it won't keep, it'll keep people from all of a sudden going out and designating everything. Because realistically, while this says more than 20% of the combined total beaches, we already allowing in every other beach and park alcohol-free zones in the playgrounds. So henceforth, my amendment, "area." Thank you.
Does everybody understand Senator Director's amendment? I guess everybody does. Anybody wish to speak on Director Amendment to the Palacios Amendment? Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the Director Amendment would probably just complicate this issue because then now, a certain park may be designated alcohol-free zone, one part of it, the left side and the other side. And then that probably would, it's going to be more complicated in the administration of it, and in probably in the monitoring and enforcement. And essentially, what my amendment proposes to do is recognizing, of course, previous testimonies with respect to limiting or restricting the designation of some of these beaches and parks as alcohol-free zone in whole, individually in whole. And that is actually the essence of the amendment, but the Director Amendment now is saying that certain parks, once designated alcohol-free zone, may be only part of it or partial of it. And then we have to, there has to be, of course, a measurement, and then the total has to combine not to exceed 20%. So let's say Epaol is 10%, down in Agua is 15% of that area, and then the total. Again, that is confusing. If that's going to be the amendment on the Palacios Amendment, then I would rather withdraw my amendment and just let it stand as it is there, which then would have no limit onto the number of beaches and parks to be designated by the Department of Parks and Recreation. And so of course, I object to that amendment.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. Anybody else wish to speak on Director Amendment? Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you very much. I guess I'm trying to make sure that, given the two senators that have previously spoken before I did, and I'm kind of hearing different explanation for what the understanding is, I think that the way I read this is that each park will be designated one status or the other. So the entire park, it won't be, half of Epaol is alcohol-free, the other half is not. With the exception of just the playgrounds, no matter where they're at, those are alcohol-free zones. So you just designate Epaol at alcohol-free, and that contains 100,000 square meters. And there's a million square meters of total park space on Guam, and so that already constitutes 10% of the area of the parks on Guam. So you can only designate another 100,000 square meters to get up to the 20% level. But it doesn't require, or doesn't say that parks can be dual-zone, you might want to speak, say that half is alcohol, half is not, that you just can't exceed the total number in area. So that access to this, of course, is determined by the size. And, you know, I was even thinking that if you want to complicate it even more, which I would like to maybe think about, is that it's the number of visitors. I mean, you know, you can now designate a park that is 100,000 square meters, but we only know that it only gets 10,000 visitors a year. And you designate a park that's 100,000 square meters alcohol-free, but it gets a million visitors a year. So therefore, it's not fair, because you're now designating one alcohol-free and only 10,000 people go there, but the one that you need to control the behavior, because that's where the people go, is now non-alcohol, because that's the visits you get. But I'm not going to propose that until I fully understand how to do it. But again, I go back to the issue of, my understanding of this is that it's not the number of parks, but the size of the park, but each park will have a single zone and not dual-zone. So there wouldn't be a confusion that if you went to Nimitz Beach in Agua, you'll know that's alcohol-free. If you went to Epaol, you know that's not alcohol-free. Yet they're different in size and so forth. So if that's the way I understand it, then I would support this. If it's the other way, then I agree with the other speaker that it would be too confusing. Thank you.
Senator Director, do you wish to clarify that?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I was answering yes to his question.
Yes, no, I understood that, that was...
Yeah, basically, it's just total area. I wasn't talking about dual zoning, but we've already set up that there's dual zoning because there's, we said that every playground is going to be alcohol-free, and then 25 feet away from the perimeter, that's going to be alcohol-free. So by this, every park now that has a playground is already dual-zone, and that'll count into the total area.
We have an objection by Senator Palacios to the Director Amendment. All those in favor of the Director Amendment, please raise your hand. Amendment fails. Back to the Palacios Amendment. Any further speakers on the Palacios Amendment? Oh, you do. It's 3 o'clock.
Thank you. Then again, seeing as that one failed, I'll move, I'll try another one. Let me make an amendment to reduce 20% to 15%.
Anybody, Senator Blas, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, it's, let's make it alcohol-free, but then let's not. Let's, I think that when we start to talk about 20%, 15%, we've set enough parameters already for the children's, for the parks, playgrounds. And, well, first off, maybe I can ask, what's the difference between 20% and 15% of 70? If I can ask the...
Senator Palacios, do you...
20% of course is 14, and 15% is 10.5. And right now, we have seven on Pilot Project.
So I think part of the problem is, some are talking in terms of numbers of parks and others are talking in square meters of total park area.
Now we're talking on numbers and...
Now we're talking on numbers of parks.
I understand that he is, yes. But I'm just wondering, you're 15%.
Well, the question now goes is then how do we, do those parks that have playgrounds in a figure factor into that 15 or 20%?
Senator Palacios?
And I tend to agree, and, you know, like I saw, but my concern here is that the language, although the intent of the body is not to ensure that it's limited in that fashion, I'm afraid that that can be interpreted in that fashion. It's because we have one whole section that says, you know, playgrounds are alcohol-free up to 25 feet. You have some playgrounds that are just nothing but playgrounds. Case in point, the playground that is in Baragada, in my own village, that's nothing but a playground, and it's a park. Does that factor into the 10, 15, or the 20? Does that factor into the 10, 15 or the 20%?
Senator Palacios, I'll have you answer the question. I'm not going to attempt to.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I understand the amendment on designating playgrounds as alcohol-free zone. That's, of course, once we pass this, that will be by statute. This section we're dealing with is the authority of the Director of Parks to designate further beyond that. That's my understanding. See, the one that we just passed, which is the Augun Amendment, would not be an area that's designated by the Parks and Recs, but by us, by statute, if that passed. And I would think that anything beyond, after that, then would be as designated by the Director, not the one that we just passed, which is the, because that's not a designation by the Director. That's designation by us to the Augun Amendment. That's my read, but...
Mr. Speaker, if I can clarify, again, you look at EPO Beach Park. EPO Beach Park, wide expanse, has got a small area that has a playground. Recognizing based on the Augun Amendment, that that playground within EPO Beach at 25 feet around its perimeter is an alcohol-free zone. Then you have the park that's in Baragata, that's nothing but a playground. Does that park in Baragata, where does it fall under? That's a park.
At the risk of commenting, it would seem to me, that's why I think you're going to need to get together to discuss whether or not it's of the 70 parks or of the square meters of the parks. Because it would seem to me that the playgrounds are just alcohol-free without the AAA procedure by the Director.
Understood.
But he can designate, under the Palacios Amendment, up to 14 parks to be alcohol-free on top of playgrounds.
Oh, if that is the read, I just want to make sure that that read is...
That's my understanding of his amendment, is that after we've marked off all of the playgrounds, the Director still has the ability to be able to designate entire parks up to 14 as area-free, alcohol-free zones. And he only wants it to be up to 20%, though somebody's proposing 15. I don't know.
Well, and I think you can see where my dilemma is at here. Recognizing, again, some areas have a playground in it, some parks, some playgrounds are designated as parks. So my question is, you know, now that it's got one designation because it is a playground, does that then fall under the 40 or now the 10.5 that can be designated further? Or is that included in?
I'll allow Senator Palacios to answer that, but it would seem to me that that's already one of the 10.5 parks that are going to be.
And that's how I'm reading it, is if that be the case, then, then, you know, if that be the case, I'm afraid, because then we're using and we're saying before that park can be designated has to go through the AAA process. But yet in another area, we found, we said, it's already an alcohol-free zone.
I'll step away and stop commenting. I'll let the...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My understanding of the Augun Amendment is that, is that all playgrounds under the jurisdiction of the Department of Parks and Recreation, by statute, as we included here, would be alcohol-free zone. And I think that that may include a playground within a big park. I would think that the designation of alcohol-free zone for that particular playground does not apply to the total park. That's my understanding. Because that is only by, I guess, by its nature of it being a playground, not because of it's a park or it's a beach, but it's a playground and it has its own so-called protection. That's my understanding of the Augun Amendment and maybe Senator Augun can respond to that because that's his amendment, as to what extent does that extend out in this situation. But, of course, by 20% proposed amendment as to designation, did not take into consideration and did not consider to include, to have included, the playground designation. That's in addition, maybe, to the 20%, I should say, so that we can have an understanding, that the 20% does not include the enclosure, which is the playground.
Senator Reagan?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My understanding of the Augun Amendment was that children's public playgrounds were excluded from the enumeration in terms of any restriction and limitation with the number of public parks. So that is my interpretation of the original amendment that was passed. And it does read, Mr. Speaker, it says in the language, "and any other area within the Guam Territory Park System," so, "and any other," so it would take place and apply to the children's playground and then any other designation which is the amendment being proffered by Senator Palacios. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I appreciate, you know, the responses by two gentlemen before me. I get, but if you read the amendment and recognizing, we still have to dispose of the amendment by Senator, the good senator from Kenyatta, because he actually proposed, nor did it pass, the 15, bringing it out to 15%. That's still on the table, isn't it? But I bring this up because the way the amendment reaches is of the combined total of beaches and parks. So the combined total does include those playgrounds that are designated, parks that are designated playgrounds.
Can we take a short recess and see if everybody can have a meeting of the minds? Thank you. Senator, we're back, we're back on, in session. Senator Director, I understand you have a amendment.
Well, let me first withdraw my previous amendment to the amendment. Thank you. Any objections?
Any objection?
Okay. So now, if we can follow along, and I'll have this in writing, but, so now it'll say, designation shall not exceed more than 15% of the combined total number, I'm inserting the word "number" there, between "total" and "of," combined total number of beaches and parks, not inclusive of playground-only parks, under the jurisdiction of DPR.
Does everybody understand the amendment?
Yes.
Any objection to the amendment? Is there an objection? Senator Director, if you would please read your amendment one more time.
Okay. I thought we had this all worked out. Let's try this one more time. Here's how it'll read in total. Alcohol-free zone designation shall not exceed more than 15% of the combined total number of beaches and parks under the jur, oh, now I got to go back, I couldn't read my own writing. Shall not exceed more than 15% of the combined total number of beaches and parks, not inclusive of playground-only parks, under the jurisdiction of DPR.
Senator Ada?
If the author of the amendment could explain, what is a playground-only park? I mean, what does that mean? Because all I need is one tree that provides a nice shade and that would make for a nice drinking tree.
No, previously, we designated that any playground area that's designated as a playground area is already considered alcohol-free. So if a park is only a playground, it's automatically designated alcohol-free and they won't count in the total.
Oh. Oh. Senator, Madam Speaker, do you wish to comment on the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, when we're talking about playground, you know, we always have to consider what you consider a playground and would it be then a playground with the equipment that you consider then a playground? Because we always, you know, I always hear beaches being referenced as a playground as well. You know, you go there and that's where children want to play, you know, at the beach. So, I, so, I mean, truly, and I know even in our schools, we say we send the children out to the playground, but then we don't have, maybe, let's say, certain equipment at all either because maybe they've been, you know, damaged or been removed because they're not safe anymore. But then it's still considered a playground because that's where the children, you know, go out to play. And you don't necessarily have to have equipment, you know, like the merry-go-rounds or the swings for children to play on. They can be, I mean, children are very creative and they can play with anything. They can play with, you know, their friends to run around, play tag, and that's playing. So they're playing in the area, so, and it could be then that it's not, do we now extend that 25 feet again from where the children are playing? I'm just asking the question and I'm putting it in everybody's minds to really think about it. So playground with playground equipment or just designated areas that we want to say, okay, in this big park, we want to reserve this particular area where it'll be safe for the children to play? And would that be then under the purview of Parks and Recs to make that determination? To designate an area as a playground for children?
Who's willing to yield and answer the question posed by Madam Speaker? Senator Pangolinan?
I think this is getting us close to deciding whether or not a school bus is a school zone and does it travel with the bus. So do playgrounds follow the kids or the kids follow the playground? I think that the intent is that a playground is where kids play and wherever that is, that's a playground. Thank you.
Are there any other amendments? Anybody wish to further comment on Senator Director's amendment? Is there any objections to the Director Amendment? The chair is seeing no objection. adopted. On Bill 151, on the Palacios Amendment, was amended by that. So, okay, on the Palacios Amendment, which was amended by the Director Amendment, any Thank you. Any further amendments to bill or anybody want to speak on 151 before I have the author close? Seeing no, Madam Speaker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Earlier, I had just stepped up for a moment because when we were talking about the playground and I actually have a list of the different playgrounds, I mean, parks, you know, throughout the island. And just doing a cursory look at, at the Dedidoo Central Park, which is the buffer strip, has a skate park facility and those are for the children, I guess, to go there and also skateboard. Then in the Kaiser Green Space, we have a tennis court, a handball court and a basketball court. And then when you go to the EPO Beach Park, you have a playground set in the park, so I guess maybe that would qualify to be a playground. And then Liguan Terrace Number One has a playground set as well. I don't see Baragata here. What happened to the Baragata Park? Yeah, Baragata's not even listed here. And that's about it then?
There's a big park in Baragata Heights.
In Baragata Heights? So, I mean...
It's gated park.
But, so then, Mr. Speaker, I guess when you consider, you know, what the bill wants to do, there really aren't that many areas that are considered, actually, I don't know, What really concerns me, I think, with the whole idea of trying to make our parks free, alcohol-free zone, was that it's in the same line as GVB, who would like to make Guam also a family destination. And we hope that the island will be more receptive to family-type activities. And when you go to the parks and you see other activities taking place, that is not conducive for children or for families, then you kind of, you know, wonder then whether this whole idea of promoting Guam as a friendly destination where, you know, families can come together and enjoy their natural surroundings. And this is kind of also show in another perspective as well, when we talk about, at one time, many times, as a matter of fact, several legislatures ago, when we actually tried, every term was to introduce a bill to protect schools and churches and nurseries, daycare centers, that in those areas, that should not have any alcohol sold within, you know, so many feet. And we can't even seem to get that going. And when you compare the number of, you know, parks and then you compare the number of daycare centers and schools and churches, you find that stores that sell alcohol and places where people would find as a place to go and consume the alcohol and clubs of that nature far exceed the number of parks that we have. It far exceeds the number of nurseries and daycare centers that we have and churches that we have throughout the island. And, you know, until such time when you really see the numbers, you never really get an idea. You don't know whether, you know, how that is a reflection of our community, our... our society, and our way of life, and our values. I think it's something that we really need to seriously, you know, sit down and look at, at what it is that we really want, uh, for our island, and, uh, and what kind of message do we want to send out to everyone, and to our children primarily? And, and I know that this bill is not going to be a panacea, you know, to try to control the amount of alcohol being consumed in our parks. It is a start, and I just hope that it won't take, you know, this body, or future, even future legislatures, to seriously look at a more holistic type of approach in terms of types of activities and, and, uh, of things that we want to do. Whether, do we want to have a community that, uh, is very supportive of, uh, the amount of alcohol consumed in our parks or parties? When we go anywhere and you see the advertisements every time, for even fiestas, uh, it's not just a name of a family who's actually hosting the party, it's always in the name of, you know, a beer, uh, being advertised, and alcohol being advertised, and what's that say about us as a community? And I'm really hoping that, you know, that time will come where maybe we can really seriously, uh, consider that and consider proposing, I would think, uh, much later, uh, other bills that would address, uh, our community, and, uh, and what we actually stand for. So, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for this opportunity.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Anybody else on the bill? Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And, uh, first off, I want to applaud the, uh, the author of, you know, the, the bill, for taking the step, uh, so that we can designate, we can start to designate and, and promote, safer, healthier, um, lifestyles in, in, in our parks. And, does this bill do enough? Will it do enough? It probably will, probably won't, but it's a start. I personally would appreciate, and, and, and maybe, uh, draft legislation that would make it prohibitive to consume alcohol at kids' events that are sponsored in public places, or that are held in public places. That's me. Will, will this curb the issue, would, would it really help to, to deal with the, the root of the problem? Maybe, maybe not. But, uh, you know, I liken this to the, a bill that we, we previously heard with regards to, um, the smoking, twenty feet from, from, from the entrance. I feel that was a good one. Could we have expanded it even more? Probably. Should it be? Probably. But it's a start. And, although, we can't legislate morality, maybe if we could, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be having these problems. But I think that, as was mentioned by our Speaker, and the previous Speaker, um, we gotta watch the message that we're sending to, to our kids. And whether or not we're gonna continue to tolerate it is one thing. I agree with the Speaker, with, with, with the, with, um, the gentleman from Baragada, that if it's really such an issue, call the cops. And maybe we have to, and maybe even with this law, if this were to become law, we're still gonna have to call the cops, somebody's gonna have to enforce it. But I hope that this will help to stop having to call the cops, because this individual, um, was really causing the ruckus, or the major problems that we were trying to avoid. So with that, Mr. Speaker, I stand in support of not only this, uh, piece of legislation, but all the amendments made to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Any other speakers on the bill? Not seeing any hands, I will call on the main sponsor, Senator Palacios, to close.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I extend my gratitude and thanks to my colleagues, uh, who have participated in the discussion, and of course, contributed much to the, uh, to making the bill a more balanced bill. I too support, of course, the removal of the impairment for vehicles, I think that's kinda extreme. The amendment and removal of up to five hundred dollars fine, uh, I, I supported that, of course. And Bill 151 at least provides some safeguards, and it guarantees this, of course, the participation of the public as to what beaches ought to be designated alcohol-free zone through the AAA process. And the augment amendment in making sure that the, uh, the rules and regulations to be, to be adopted include the consideration as to the, prior to the designation by the director of these areas. I think all in all, uh, with the amendment and everything, I think what, what, what remains in the bill is, is a good start. It may not be enough, but it's a good start. And right now, with the, uh, seven pilot project that have been implemented as alcohol-free zone on March twenty-fourth, according to the testimony, and I, I can recite part of it, uh, the For Santa Agida, of course, because it has historical value, and Jos Santos Laddis Stone Park, it has historical value, Isagana Park, is it a safety, the safety issue there because of the thoroughfare, Westagana, Alupan Beach Park, the Adalup Park, and the skate, the skate park in Dedidu. And, so there is a criteria established. And, again, the limit on the, uh, number of, uh, parks and, and beaches to be designated as alcohol-free zone, I, I support the Director amendment of not to exceed fifteen percent, of course, not in, not including those, uh, playgrounds that have been designated. And, of course, I ask my colleagues to consider and at least, will support, that give me, give, give this your support, and let us start. At this point, uh, I understand that, that the mere, the mere posting of alcohol-free zone, there is some deterrence of value there. If nothing else, at least it removes the ability of an individual to, to, to claim that he didn't know that the place is alcohol-free zone, and while there might be, uh, needed equipment and additional, uh, park patrol that would help much more than just this, again, that would be forthcoming, but I, I, the, the need now for some kind of regulation, I think, the time has come, and I, I like my, uh, colleagues to support Bill 151. Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. And I move it to the reading. On the motion to move Bill 151 to the voting file, any objections? No objections? So ordered. Uh, Bill 168, I believe, is next.
Can I just dispose of 168?
Yeah. That's why I'm calling it.
Yes. Yeah, Mr. Speaker, I, uh, like to move that Bill 168 be moved down to the bottom of the second reading file.
There being no objection? So ordered.
Madam Speaker, we're seeing the marked-up copy. Just two minutes.
Okay, so we're just gonna go ahead and, uh, Senator, yeah, while we wait for, for your bill, we're gonna move on to Resolution Number 170. Uh, Senator, tie to wait, or--
Yes, Madam Speaker. Um, Senator Calvall, who is the author of the resolution, is in the parking lot as we speak. If you can just give him one minute, he's coming in from the parking lot right now.
Okay, so we've got one for two minutes and one for one minute. Okay. Then it's one s-- 174, no. And that's nature would take a short recess. Back in session, uh, Senator Calvall, you're recognized on Resolution 170.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to place Resolution Number 170 into the vote, uh, third fi-- uh, third reading file.
And with discussion?
If I can make a, a quick summary of the resolution.
Okay, please.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, uh, Guam and the Philippines have a really long, shared, common history, uh, over hundreds of years. If you look at the ancestry of many of our people living on Guam now, uh, there is this connection with the Philippines. As a matter of fact, there had been, from the times of the Spaniards to the Ameri-- early period of the American occupation, uh, direct ties with the Philippines in both either cold colonies of the Spanish Empire, or also colonies and territories of the United States. It wasn't until, again, the independence of, of the Philippines after World War II, where there was, I guess, the first time in, in, in hundreds of years, a separation of the Philippines and, and Guam. But even after the, uh, the independence of the Philippines, uh, there have been, uh, many periods in Guam's history, in the post-World War II era, where there's been a, a wave of immigration, uh, from the Philippines, uh, that was, uh, again, a requirement towards the building up of our island to what it is today. Madam Speaker, with this history with Guam, uh, and the Philippines, uh, we must be note also that there is this tremendous military buildup that will be occurring over these next few years. And with that, um, in April twenty-seventh of two thousand and nine, uh, represent, representatives from Alonopo City, uh, did, uh, come to Guam to participate in the, um, in the Economic Forum. And it was at that point where I had met Mayor James Gordon, uh, and we struck up a conversation on whether we could have a formalized relationship, uh, between Guam and, and Alonopo City. We must note that, uh, there was a tentative agreement to move forward in this direction, and on May sixth of two thousand and nine, the City Council of Alonopo passed Resolution Number Sixty, again inviting Guam into the Philippine International Sisterhood and Twinning Program, and this authorized Mayor Gordon to enter into this agreement with Guam. Uh, Madam Speaker, this passage of this resolution would be the complete, would be the, uh, the movement from this legislative body to correspond with the City Council of Alonopo City. Uh, Madam Speaker, obviously, there's, there's a, a shared history between our islands, as a matter of fact, even with the Zambalis organization here in Guam, there are, um, many citizens of this island that are originally from the Zambalis region, and have contributed to this, to this island of Guam, and to our economy. What this relationship will do would try to form a mutually beneficial relationship for both communities, not only in just the military buildup, but in other areas of mutual understanding and benefit. It's interesting to know, when we, um, when we look at the areas of Alonopo, which are the, again, the Subic area and the Clark area, it's not so much really the, the military buildup, but kind of looking at, at that area and what happened after the, uh, the US military moved out of that region, and how that region transitioned from a military economy onto what it is today, and it is one of the more vibrant, uh, locations in the Philippines. Uh, they had an existing infrastructure of, of skilled labor, as well as, uh, an infrastructure, uh, that was built as a result of the military bases. And the way I look at it, too, uh, with this military buildup that's gonna be happening in Guam over the next several years, there will be that buildup, there will be heavy construction, but then it will end, and whether it's six years, or eight years, or maybe even ten years, it will end. I think, uh, working with, with Alonopo City and this region, and looking at the similarities between both communities, and seeing even how Alonopo City had, um, transitioned from that military economy, it, it's, um, I think, to our benefit to, to work with these folks, so that again, not only during the military buildup period in Guam, but also, uh, when the construction activities are over, we could work, uh, and, and maybe use some of the examples of this community, so that we could have, what would you call, a soft landing or a transitioning from that buildup phase and construction phase to a more stable and long-term economy. Again, uh, Madam Speaker, I'm asking members of the body for their support in the passage of, of Resolution 170, and I want to thank all my colleagues, because this has been, again, a bipartisan, uh, a resolution, and I ask for your support. Thank you very much, uh, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Spisho, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Speaker. Uh, Madam Speaker, I too rise in, uh, full support of this resolution, uh, which, if passed, would authorize you to promulgate a, um, a memorandum of understanding between the Guam Legislature and the mayor of, uh, Alonopo City to have the sister-city, uh, relationship. I want to commend, uh, the author of this resolution. I want to thank him for, uh, asking me to be a co-sponsor, and I want to say that, um, Senator Guthers and I were recently in the Philippines. As you know, we made our work there very public. Uh, Senator Guthers, who has oversight over the military buildup, and myself, who has oversight over foreign affairs, I think the message we conveyed on behalf of the legislature, and on behalf of the people of Guam, is that any foreign worker who participates, um, on the island, whether it's for, for the military buildup, or whether it's just for any other, uh, project, but any foreign worker whose services are required here on the island, those foreign workers will not be exploited. Uh, that was-- That was our message. We're working with the Philippine government to have a employment contract that they signed at the Philippine side, consistent with all of the local and federal statutes. Because the problem here, Madam Speaker, we recognize, is contracts that these foreign workers sign in the Philippines oftentimes are not the same contracts they sign here on Guam. And that's where the abuses start, and that's where the potential for abuses can be breeded there. And so I recognize that this sister-city relationship, the impetus for which is because of the military buildup, and the mayor of Alonopo, Mayor Gordon, is trying to be proactive and say, how can his community, how can his region participate? The mover of this resolution was absolutely correct. If any of you just go to Subic Bay, you would be very impressed with what they've been able to do. The United States was forced out by an act of God. A volcano erupted, and so they really had no choice but to evacuate Subic and Clark. But prior to that, there was a lot of discussions from various Philippine government officials to whether or not the Philippines should renew its contract with the United States. And so this eruption of Maupunatubo kind of solved that debate and resolved that debate for them. But when we went to Subic Bay, we saw an area that took advantage of $8 billion worth of infrastructure left there by the United States, and we saw community that cleaned their area up themselves, and now they have skilled welders in that area. That's the economic hub-free zone of the entire Philippines. They have a tax-free system. And I think this sister-city relationship, someone might ask, well, how can Guam benefit from something like this? I think we can benefit from their experiences, and we can lean on them to, for some kind of advice, or some kind of ideas on how we can take a lemon and turn it into lemonade. And if anyone wants to know exactly how to do that, they don't need to look too far. They should just look at what Alonopo has been able to do by way of converting the resources left behind by the United States there in Subic. And so I think that this resolution, on the surface, is very substantive, in a sense that it will not only create a sister-city relationship, that's just going to be all social. I think that this is going to be extremely a vehicle where we can exchange ideas, and also a vehicle to which we can receive that kind of workforce from that region. So I want to commend the good senator for this resolution, and I rise in full support of it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Respecho. Senator Guthers on the motion on Resolution 170.
Madam Speaker, Mas Maganda sa Resolution 170. It's really well-written, it's very well-researched. Senator Calvo did a tremendous job with his hearing. I want to give a little insight about the Gordons. And I want to share this with you because of my experience as a student in the Philippines, at the University of the Philippines. I went to school with Richard Gordon, who is now Senator Gordon, who was also the former mayor of Zambalis, Alonopo City, and also the former head of the Subic Bay operation after the United States left the Philippines. And he's also candidate for president, that's true. And by the way, Senator Gordon will be here next week for the School of Business and Public Ad, the O.G.'s Economic Conference, as one of the special speakers. The Gordon family has been involved in the leadership of Alonopo and the Zambalis area for over 50 years. Their late father, the father of James and Richard Gordon, was the mayor of Alonopo City, and he was assassinated when James and Richard were very young boys. It was a real tragedy. But that did not dissuade them from public service, and they continued on the tradition of serving their province and their city, one after the other, serving as mayor of Alonopo, and in other capacities. Now, what's significant about Alonopo and Zambalis in particular is their long history with the United States. From 1898 until the American bases in the Philippines were discontinued because of the volcano eruption, and because of the policy of the Philippine Congress not to renew the US base agreements in the Philippines, for, my goodness, close to 100 years or more, we had a long presence in the Philippines, and particularly the province of Zambalis. Two big military bases, Clark Air Base, and of course, Subic Bay. The retreat of the United States military in these two locations created a real void for the Filipino people, particularly those that were associated with the US military bases as employees. They employed thousands of Filipinos at Subic Base and at Clark Air Base, but also had a great impact on the economies of the cities and towns that surrounded the bases. But instead of complaining about it, the Gordon family, working with their colleagues and their associates, and the communities affected by the American pullout, was able to turn something negative into something positive. If you visit Subic Bay, if you visit Clark and the surrounding areas today, you will see a very vibrant economic activity in those areas. What they've done is they've created free enterprise zones, export zones, ship repair facilities, and numerous other industrial activities within the confines of the former US military bases. One of the things that I think is very significant for us is that, by doing this, the Philippine ingenuity allowed them to retain the professional services of those Filipino citizens that worked on the bases for the United States military, but to redirect their specialized training to commercial interests, rather than interests for the US military. Another significant aspect, particularly as you find in Subic, is they have developed a training facility at Subic to train people into very important skills in the trades, in many, many areas of endeavor, to prepare these folks for positions in the country and outside the country. I would dare say, if we really want to build skills in our community and help many of our people take advantage of the military buildup on Guam, it would not be a bad idea for our Guam Community College to team up with the Subic Bay Redevelopment Authority, and to even send some of our people for very specialized training at this facility. Because they have top-rated skills, industrial, technical, electronic, all those areas, they're doing the training right there at Subic Bay. Madam Speaker, Senator Calvo is absolutely correct. Our long history under the Spanish period is one that we share with the Philippines. Because both the Philippines and Guam was taken over by the United States at the end of the Spanish-American War in 1898, at the same time. And the US flag was planted in the Philippines, the US flag was planted on Guam. The real difference was, when US presence on Guam started in 1898, we were destined to be a naval location, a refueling spot for the Navy, a military bastion for the Navy. It was a little different in the Philippines. And our history started to change because the Philippines became a US Commonwealth. And the United States promised the Filipino people that they would have the opportunity to determine their ultimate political status. That was a promise that was made and was kept. And in 1946, the Filipino people voted on what choice they wanted for their political status. They could have voted for continued Commonwealth status, seeking statehood, or independence. And the Filipino people in 1946 voted for independence, and they became the Republic of the Philippines. But up until that point, they were US nationals. We have yet to have that experience here, the self-determination experience, but hopefully that'll happen. I think that this is an excellent resolution. It promotes cultural opportunities, educational exchanges, and hopefully some business and entrepreneurial opportunities. And I want to remind all of our colleagues here, when many of you think of the Philippines, you think of H2 workers. The Philippines is much more than that. The Philippines is a country of great wealth, in terms of its natural resources, in terms of its cultural resources, in terms of its educational resources. And there's a lot of wealth in the Philippines from entrepreneurs who would like to invest here because of the flag we fly. And as we seek investments from countries like Japan, and Korea, and Taiwan, we should never discount the potential investments that can come from the Philippines. Some of the economic tigers in Asia are listed. In the Asian equivalent of Forbes 500, largest corporations are from the Philippines. So with that, again, I'd like to say this is a terrific resolution, a lot of thought went into it, great hearings, and I think we should support this. I 100% support it. I want to commend Senator Calvo for having the wisdom to do this. And I hope we can do this also with other sister relationships in the Philippines, with other provinces and other communities there. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, Senator Guthers. Speaker Wampat, you're recognized on Resolution 70.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I was trying to quickly read, you know, all of the documents that's attached to the resolution, to basically have a better understanding of, you know, how this all had basically started. And apparently, there was a visit by the mayor, Gordon, who came here during the forum, industry forum, and went back then to, you know, his city to extend an invitation to Guam, and how this, you know, really basically started. Because we always want to have a better understanding in terms of how then do we extend this invitation, or accept an invitation. And it was actually based then on the People-to-People Program, that went as far back as 1956, that was inaugurated apparently by the President of the United States then, which was to pave the way for establishing greater friendship and understanding between the people of the United States and other nations. And then one of the things that was developed then was this Philippine International Sisterhood and Twinning Program, which was conducted for the broad purposes of exchange of ideas and people between the citizens of the Philippines and other nations. And to implement then such a program with other communities, what they are allowed to do is to be able to affiliate with cities and other nations then of similar characteristics and mutual interest. And as described by, you know, the authors and co-sponsors of this resolution, is that they've listed the similarities of the characteristics of the Philippines and Guam, and how both will be mutually beneficial, or can benefit from this twinning and sisterhood. The question, however, that I have, and I understand this well, is only to the parts to make sure that the body realizes this, that when it is then passed, is that it says sure, that resolve, that E. Legisletura in Guahana, on behalf of the government of Guam, and representing the best interests of the people of our island, do hereby then accept the invitation, because there was a resolution for the invitation, and now we're saying we're going to accept then and enter into this sister-city relationship. And that it would actually take place, the signing would actually take place here in Guam, and it says the memorandum shall be signed in Guam at a date and time to be determined by the Speaker of the Legislature. So, and that's the reason why I asked this question, because there are some things that are listed that I'm going to do, and I want to make sure that, you know, I am aware of this. The question now that I like to ask, because when I was reading the memorandum, is whether some changes can be made, amendments can be made on this memorandum. So that would be the very first question that I need to ask. I know, not on the resolution itself, but the memorandum of understanding, and I don't know who will be able to answer that question.
I'll ask Senator Calvo, would you like to you to Speaker Wampat's question?
Yes, I will yield. Again, Madam Speaker, this is a draft of memorandum of understanding between both the mayor of City of Alonopo, as well as the Speaker of Eminato Trentino Legisletura in Guahana. Again, I would assume that with the, in fact, you may know Mr. Ping Urbano, who's been acting as a layson with Alonopo City and Guam, who provided this draft document. I see no problem with having to make changes or amendments to the memorandum of understanding, as long as it's mutually acceptable by, I guess, both parties that are cosignatories to the memorandum. I guess, and also, as long as it's in line with, and no major diversion from both the resolution passed by this body, or the, and to correct my pronunciation of the words, San Geronang Palungsat enacted by the Council of Alonopo City.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Then the other question I would have then would be for the chairman and committee on rules then, is that we are now going to pass this resolution, would then, can I ask if then the memorandum through the committee on rules then can be circulated then for the members' signature, so that then if, you know, and the reason why I'm saying that I like to be able to, you know, work even with the author and the chairman on rules as well, is that to kind of put a little bit more in terms of the history of why this is done, and what the parameters are, so that then we're not doing something that's totally out, I mean, away from what, you know, the People-to-People Program really is all about since 1956. It's not to change it, there's so much, but more to add those in. And also then maybe where it says, you know, later on, of course, not now, but we're asked at the invitation of the Guam senators, because if you read the resolution that came from Alonopo, Resolution Number 60, is that they did the exact same thing, and they're the ones apparently should be making the invitation for Guam to participate, so we're accepting. But then on the MOU, it says we are the ones sending out an invitation. So I just wanted some of those to be clarified.
Speaker Wampat, I'll ask the committee chair on rules if he'd like to you. Senator Respecho, would you like to you to Speaker Wampat's inquiry?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Speaker, also for expressing that concern. Maybe I can suggest then to, if the speaker would agree, that rather than saying the legislature hereby promulgates the attached memorandum, because I think she's absolutely correct, that this language means that there's a process that's going to take place after this resolution is to be adopted. So if we just amend, promulgates to adopt, and we know that the resolution is attached, then this is what we're adopting today, if we decide to move this forward. And maybe the legal counsel can be authorized to work with the author, to add in any additional language that reflects a factual relationship between the Filipino people and the people of Guam. So those are very valid concerns. The speaker would like this memorandum to be a little bit more substantive, and really convey the convey the message that we do have similar backgrounds and culturally we're similar, and we can draw on some same experiences. I agree with what the Speaker's saying here, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Raspisha. Speaker Wampat?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate the Chairman and the Committee on Rules for taking that under consideration. I hope then that I'm looking, I know, at our legal counsel to see whether this is something that could be worked on. I don't think it would be as difficult, because it's more just the adoption of this, and then anything in reference to the memorandum would not be reflected here, and that that can be drawn up later and easily, again, through a, you know, Committee on Rules resolution to circulate among the members to approve it. And I thank the author and the Chairman on Committee on Rules for their response to my questions. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Anybody else wishing to speak on Resolution 170? Senator Rector, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I'll rise in support of this resolution. How can you not? I mean, our brothers and sisters in the Philippines and Valongopo City are so deeply embedded in our island, in our culture, that it only makes sense to have a relationship with probably every city in the Philippines to a certain extent. I just kind of find it ironic, or ironic, as other people pronounce it, that on the eve of a huge military buildup on Guam, where the U.S. government is coming in to drop big bases on, to change our culture, change our island, and change our way of life, we're creating a sister-city with somebody, a community in the Philippines, that did just the opposite. They kicked the U.S. bases out. They said, "Give us our own country, give us our own culture, let us make our own decisions, get the heck out of here." And I think maybe we should have a resolution for those brave senators in the Legislature of the Philippines that stood against American imperialism and said no to the base, as opposed to saying, "Let's celebrate having bases and bringing in more workers for it." But I stand in support of the resolution. How can you not? Once again, thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. On the main motion for the Resolution 170, are there any other speakers to close? Senator Raspisha, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As co-sponsor of this resolution, the main sponsor asked if I can close, and I want to convey as long as well as I do the sentiments, appreciation that the body too, they now entertained this resolution. And I spoke with Senator Calvo's staff, and based on your suggestion, there's no objections to adopting this resolution, which would then authorize the promulgation of a memorandum of understanding, which would clearly highlight the relationship between Philippines and Guam, and that at that some point, when the author is prepared to present this, based on your suggestion, Madam Speaker, the Committee on Rules will then be the one to decide what kind of final language will appear in the MOU. So I rise and get in support of this resolution and to convey those same sentiments by the author, and to request that Senator Tina Munya Barnes be a co-sponsor.
On the motion then for Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes to be one of the co-sponsors, an objection is ordered, and on the main motion then to send it down to a third reading file without any objections then, so ordered. Thank you very much. Senator Guthertz, as promised to you, that we would come back to 92, Bill 92, and that you would have then now the original bill with the markup. Does everybody have a copy of it? Want to make sure. Senator Ada, is that what? Thank you. Very good. I just want to make sure.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and colleagues. Yes, the marked-up copy of the bill was passed out. As you know, earlier, there was some discussion about the strike-through and the insertions of the current language of these sections as codified. So I have for the edification of the body, I've prepared the genesis of the measure prior to the introduction of Bill 92-30 as introduced. And this is really from Section 2 of Title IV, GCA. Just for the record, I did not originally do this in its entirety when I introduced the measure, because as the language states, the proposal was to repeal and reenact these specific sections with the current proposed language in Bill 92. But each of you should have before you therefore a number of items. One is the marked-up copy of the Bill 92. Then you have the law, the current four GCA from Guam code annotated, and then you have, Bill 92 is introduced, and then you have the amendments that I passed out earlier. So if, Madam Speaker, you will allow me, I'd like to go to Amendment Number Four.
When you say amendment, you mean you're referring back to?
The, remember the amendments I passed out, the packet of amendments, 1 to 11, minus Amendment Number Two.
Okay, so that then, we will be able to follow that with the document that you've given us?
Yes, we're on page seven, Section Two, Item I, Line Two. This amendment-
One moment. We did not finish Amendment Number Three.
I thought we did.
No, we didn't.
We did not-
Because that was at the time when Senator Ada brought up then wanting to know.
All right, let's go back to Three then. I did explain Number Three. Amendment Three is on Page Five in Section Two, Item E, Line Nine, to delete the language, quote, "after their effective date," unquote, and insert in its place, quote, "from the date of the personnel action," unquote. And the purpose of this amendment is that it takes into consideration the nature of personnel actions and makes reasonable the 20-day time period to submit the personnel actions to the Civil Service Commission. This amendment is also a result of the Commission's collaboration with various human resource offices throughout the government of Guam. The second part of the amendment will be on Line 14 to insert after the word, quote, "made," unquote, the following, quote, "And such non-refundable amount shall be immediately deposited into the Commission's fund." This provision, Madam Speaker and colleagues, provides enforcement strength to the subsection's requirement of submitting to the Commission an agency's personal action within the prescribed time. It has been an ongoing experience of the Civil Service Commission that certain agencies either do not submit their personal actions at all, or submit them a year later. Recall the purpose of submitting personal actions to the Commission. It is so that the Commission can audit the action to determine if things were done properly, which goes to ensuring accountability in the merit system and making sure that the government employees are hired, transferred, promoted, demoted, given salary increments, and other actions of a personnel nature at the correct level, no more or no less. This amendment will also create a source of funds apart from the general fund and legislative appropriation for the Commission's revolving account. So I offer, Madam Speaker, Amendment Number Three for consideration by my colleagues.
So on Amendment Three, and I'd just like to remind our colleagues that the only amendment that had passed on that, on this particular amendment, was the change from 10 to 15 calendar days.
That's correct.
So you have all that?
Right.
All right. So Senator Ada then on the Number Three amendment by Senator Guthertz.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, actually, I was reviewing this, comparing this Amendment Three, comparing it to the original language, and if you take a look at the original Part D of the existing law, I guess what we have here is, I'm concerned about this one, we take a look at that part which imposes this 10% salary reduction penalty upon the agency head in the event that they don't comply, that they don't turn in these required notices of personnel actions within the 15 days. I'm concerned about that particular amendment, because that is in contradiction to, if you take a look at Page Seven of the bill in Section Four, it clearly spells out there in the existing statute that "No enforcement shall be commenced against any department head or other employee or officer of the government of Guam in his personal capacity." So I'm not, I mean, so is that saying, is that paragraph then saying that we really cannot impose that 10% salary reduction against the director for not complying with that 15 days or submitting personnel actions or notice of personnel actions within 15 calendar days?
What page is that again?
Well, if you take a look at, on the bill itself-
Page Seven. Okay, sixteen. Thank you.
It's Page Seven of the original bill.
Page Seven, if you take a look at Lines 16 through 18.
Yes.
So I was reading through this, I was trying to reconcile, how do I interpret that sentence? "No enforcement shall be commenced against any department head or other employee or officer of the government of Guam in his personal capacity." So I, and then, of course, now with, in this amendment, although Amendment Number Three that we are discussing right now is actually only making an amendment to-
E.
To E, or what was reenacted. And actually, in the reenactment of the existing law, what the new language in the reenactment was putting in, that 10% salary reduction penalty, which then is kind of contradictory to a later section that paid in Page Seven there, Section Four.
Would you like the author to respond?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much.
Senator Guthertz?
I think Senator Ada pointed out a good point, and I can amend, I can amend Section Four when we get to that point, Madam Speaker, to make it consistent with the section we're speaking about now. May I also offer-
I'm not, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, then, if that's, then maybe I would then go ahead and proffer an amendment to address what appears to be a contradiction. My amendment would simply be to delete, starting on Line 12 there.
Page Five?
Well, actually, I was thinking of just deleting that 10% salary reduction of the agency head. And here's the rationale for moving in that direction to actually delete that penalty, is that inasmuch as we all believe the director controls everything that goes on in that agency, we know that in reality, that is not the case. And there may be circumstances which did not allow him to be able to submit the notice of personnel actions within this 10 calendar days after written request by the Commission. And to state that then, if that's the case, immediately what will result is a 10% salary reduction, I think that's a little bit probably, I think it's going overboard. And I just, I don't feel comfortable that the agency head really should be penalized in this manner.
So Senator Ada, is your amendment then on the Guthertz Number Three amendment, is that starting from the word "failure"?
Actually, I would delete, starting on Line 10, starting with the word "failure," all the way down to Line 14. That's right. And then you'll pick up then, "The Civil Service Commission shall submit a copy of its written request to the agency head for compliance with this section to its legislature in Guahan by the next working day." So that's my amendment, Madam Speaker.
So from Line 10, starting with the word "failure," the sentence "failure," all the way down to Line 14?
Up to the word "made."
Yep, to the word "made," period.
Correct.
On the Ada amendment, any speakers? Senator Guthertz on the Ada amendment.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to point out that in my consultations with the Civil Service Commission, they have had great difficulty getting government agencies to comply with the requirement to submit copies of their personnel actions for compliance reviews. And that is why this proposed amendment was included in the bill. It wasn't an original idea, because this legislature, as you recall, has required directors of departments and agencies to submit financial reports on a timely basis, and the penalty for not doing so was similar to this. And that seemed to help us a lot getting compliance from these departments and agencies. I'm just concerned if we entertain the motion and it does pass, that the Civil Service Commission won't have any teeth to force compliance.
Thank you, Senator Guthertz. There's a problem here, however, Senator Ada, with your amendment apparently, because earlier, there was, Senator Guthertz had amended that at a sentence after "made," and it says, "And such non-refundable amount shall be immediately deposited into the Commission's revolving fund." So that means then that your amendment can end with just where "made" is, it's got to continue on to the end of the other amendment that Senator Guthertz had proffered and passed. So can you then re-
So then the amendment then really should be extended further to actually, to actually delete the words "and such non-refundable amount," which is the penalty, "shall be immediately deposited in the Commission's revolving fund."
Yes, all the way.
Yeah, so it should end there-
Fund.
After the word "revolving fund."
Yes, okay, that's great. Thank you very much, Senator Ada, for that clarification. So Senator Guthertz, I'm sorry, you're not done yet? You want to continue?
Well, I just wanted to say that, as I said, I think this will take out any teeth the Commission has. I would like to suggest maybe the, if the author of the amendment is uncomfortable with penalizing a director for not complying with this requirement, then you might consider amending an amendment which would make the agency responsible, rather than the individual Just a suggestion.
On the Ada amendment to the Guthertz amendment, Senator Titegri, the Ada amendment, which is to delete from the word, starting from the sentence "failure," all the way down to "revolving fund."
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I stand in full support of the Ada amendment. I truly believe that this could be unconstitutional. Without due process, how can we implement a penalty for someone without first having its opportunity to defend itself? There's nothing in here that does that, to provide for that director or- To provide for that director or deputy director, the due process, to determine whether he, there was a failure in, in submitting the written testimony, there's nothing in here that does that. So without that, I, I stand in full support with Senator Ada's amendment.
Thank you very much, Senator Titigui. Are there any other speakers on the Ada amendment? Senator Richter, and then Senator Pangolinan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise to oppose the Ada amendment. The language proposed in the original amendment by Senator Guthers is incredibly important. In no way, shape, or form does it penalize a director for doing what he's supposed to do. And 15 calendar days is basically three working weeks. If there's any director of any agency of Guam that processes an action and can't get a copy from his office to the Civil Service Commission in three weeks, there is a whole heck of a lot more problems in there than this. It is not unjustifiable to have a fee on, on this unclassified employee. It is actually imperative that we make sure that every director follow the law, follow the rules, follow the regulations, and follow the orders of the Civil Service Commission. How can we have justice on Guam if we don't have a system in place that ensures that people carry out the duties and orders that they're supposed to? This ensures it, it puts a penalty on it. Now, think about the poor employee that could be waiting for this judgment to go through and to be approved by the Civil Service Commission. If you're waiting to get hired because this action was cut, and it can't go through until it's processed and approved by the Civil Service Commission, and they're sitting there waiting, 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 waiting for the director to do his job, where's the justice for that person? Where's the due process for that person? Where's the fairness for that person? I stand and oppose the amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Richter. Senator Pangolinan, on the Ada amendment?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my understanding, of course, of this 10% penalty is that it's, it really isn't confined to this requirement for action and responsibility by the employees and directors. I think we have in this body passed requirements for failure of a director to act on other matters, and what we've seen is that when there is a threat of financial penalty, then people perform. People make sure things get done. And when there is none, then people just kind of let it go. We do that with regards to open government, in terms of the requirement to respond to FOIA requests, that if they don't act, then they suffer a consequence. And that's only for release of information. That failure to act just means, and I don't want to, you know, belittle it, but it, it means that information doesn't get to the people that want the information. So there's really no real harm, other than harm to our institutions and the, the public in terms of denying them that information. But in a lot of times, that information does not have a consequence of direct effect on the individuals. Now here, you have an individual who's waiting for the director to do their job, and failure for them to do their job has a direct consequence to that individual. Either he continues to be on suspension, he doesn't get his increment, he doesn't get his raise, things that affect the lives of that individual who's waiting for the director to make sure that whatever he decides, and, and we're talking mostly in adverse cases, or adverse action cases, so the employee's either suspended, and yeah, so, so when the director turns over the, the GG1 personnel action, you know, two months later or six months later, yeah, he can get back pay, but he's not going to be able to pay his rent or buy food for the table while he's on suspension without pay. So these are the kind of situations where we have individuals subjected to these conditions when a director doesn't do their job of making sure that once he acts on this individual and, and decides a course of action from this individual, that this individual's right is protected in a timely manner and that it gets transmitted to the Civil Service Commission. I understand, you know, that, yeah, you may tell your secretary, "All right, get this up to the Civil Service Commission," and she may not do it. But you know what? When you know that you're affecting somebody's lives, then you've got to have a responsibility. It is your responsibility to make that, make sure that person is doing his job, and if he's not doing it, it is your responsibility to discipline him. It is also your responsibility that when you discipline him, you put in the system and the process that's going to protect his rights. Because when you protect his rights, you're protecting your own right to make sure that you can do your job the way you see fit, as long as you comply with the conditions and the terms and the rules and regulations that govern you doing your job in disciplining that employee. And to leave it so open-ended with no consequence to yourself, while there's a huge consequence to that employee of not being able to pay rent, not even, maybe, maybe not being able to make a car payment, and even not being able to buy food. Because now he is waiting to be reinstated, or he's waiting to be, for, for some decision to come from the Civil Service Commission, that can only come when the civil service receives that personnel action. That's what gets him rolling, and he's able to then push forward his case and assert his rights. And if you're not doing your job, you're also being derelict. If you don't do it, then maybe the employee, after the 20th day or the 60 days, and in some instances, that we're all familiar with that rule, then you give up your right to discipline that employee, but, and even that's not acceptable from the government's point of view, that we let directors, you know, throw these things out and not comply with the timeframes, because it doesn't hurt the employee only. It also hurts the government and our ability to provide the service that the public deserves from its employees, and when those employees don't perform, then we've got to protect our right to make sure we discipline them. And it can't be at the expense of the employee, and that's why this director must put the process in place and comply with these timelines, so that this employee also can assert his rights and protect his rights, his family, and his livelihood. It's just fair, and this, make sure that attention is paid to this process once it gets put in place, and that everybody is set, and that everybody monitors this, and make sure that we count the days. Yes, we count the days, and that's what it takes. And if you don't do that, you're derelict in your duty, and either the governor, we just never see a discipline coming down from the governor. So there's got to be some discipline coming from somewhere else, and it comes from the statutes that have been passed. And this statute is not confined to just, or this penalty is not targeting just this action. It tar, this kind of penalty is being imposed on department directors for failure to perform their duties in other responsibilities that they have that have been put into statute by this body. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. On the Ada amendment, Senator Blascher, recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, although I agree that, you know, we've, we've got to be able to put, basically, the feet to the fire of, of the agency heads to be, to make sure that all the proper paperwork and with regards to grievances and whatnot, anything that goes to the civil service gets in a timely manner, because, yes, you're right, talking about an employee that's affected, affected by this. I just don't necessarily agree with the process provided, of which is the, for the, for the Ada amendment to, to, to delete this punitive action. Because there, I have a couple of questions. When you say will immediately result in a 10% salary reduction of the agency head until compliance is made, is that 10% of the individual's yearly salary, or 10% of the individual's weekly paycheck? Because there's a big difference. And when you say 10% of salary reduction until compliance is made, what do you mean, until compliance is made? Do we deduct 10% every day? And if it's 10% of the yearly, annual salary, after 10 days, what are you going to deduct? And really, after 10 days, and let's say you do that, you go down that road, and you say it's 10% of the individual's yearly salary, and after 10 days, it's, it's no longer there, still doesn't resolve anything for the employee. Guess what? The next 10 days, the employee is still left, quote unquote, left holding the bag. So we've made now, the Civil Service Commission, thousands of dollars richer. But have we, have we, have we dealt with the issue to help the employee? No, we haven't. So maybe in, in place of this, so that we can make, protect and ensure, protect the employee, and put the feet to the fire of the agency head, is that if it's not there at this time, by this time period, it's not deducting from the agency heads, reinstate the employee. Give the employee back the benefits that you took away, because if you failed to do your job to be able to show why you did this, so who's going to suffer there? Now the agency head has to, has to answer to, because you failed to do this, now this in, the employee may be bad, but you know what? Because the, the director failed to do his job, he's back. But is it the employee's fault? No. Here, like I said, if this were to stay in, we're going to take out the 10%. But you know what? At the end of the day, the employee's still not there, we still haven't resolved the employee's issue. What are we actually trying to do here? So although I'm in support of the Ada amendment to delete this, I also encourage, maybe then we find another way, so that we protect that employee. Let's remember what this is for. This is for Civil Service Commission, this is to ensure that our employees are treated fairly and equally. Deducting 10% from a director's salary isn't going to help the employee, because you know what? It's not even going to the employee, it's going to the Civil Service Commission. So I support the Ada amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the Ada amendment, which is to delete? I'd then like to recognize the author to close, mover of the amendment to close.
Madam Speaker, I'm, I'm just a little disappointed that we're looking at negative ways to get the director to, to do what he's supposed to do. And like I said earlier, the fact that he didn't get it there within 15 days, however many days, could be for a number of legitimate reasons. But it just, I, I find, I'm concerned that we're using basically negative leadership in this case to get a director to go to, to, to perform. And we make it seem as if that director wakes up in the morning to see how he can put it to the employees, how, you know, how he's not going to be able to do his work, and, and I don't believe that that is the case. But then, as we go through this discussion of, you know, well, by putting his feet to the fire and taking money out of his pocket and making him miserable, then he's going to do his work. And I ask, in this whole equation, where is that chief executive of the executive branch of government, the one that that director answers to? Both directors, the director of the Civil Service Commission and the director of that particular agency that now we're trying to put the squeeze on the, on that particular head or that particular organization? Where's the executive off, the chief executive officer in all this, who can then bring these parties together and explain to them why performance needs to be forthcoming? And I'm just wondering, why we conveniently just kind of seem to overlook that? But let me describe a scenario. Let's take, for example, a director in a department who really wants to clean up the department, and to instill the necessary discipline so that employees are performing the way they should be, providing the kind of customer service that the, that the constituents want, or, or expect from that particular department. Well, guess what happens to the director who goes in there and tries to, to do, to instill the discipline, making sure that people come in at 8:00 AM, making sure that, you know, the lunchtime is just one hour? Before long, it's like, hey, this is the way we've always done it. We come in at eight-ish, we leave at 12, we come in at one-ish, and we leave at 5:00. And so, here's an opportunity then, an adverse action is filed against an employee, and through a conspiracy, the paperwork doesn't get down to the Civil Service Commission. So what do we do? We penalize the director. Oh, we got him! Squeeze it some more, keep it another day. And another day, pretty soon, that director is going to just say, hey, this is not worth it, he leaves the department. Are things any better? As my colleague mentioned earlier, that employee is no better off today than, than several days before. All we, all we accomplished was manage to force out a director who presumably, one could argue was probably trying to do his work to get that organization moving in the right direction. And so I think that is very, a very plausible scenario wherein then, by design, paperwork is not submitted in a timely manner, so that we can pressure out that director who's doing his work, and he leaves? Have we accomplished anything? No. I submit, Madam Speaker, that, you know, the use of negative leadership certainly is not a direction that I, I would subscribe to. If we can't get people to perform because they believe that that is what needs to be done, but instead have to always penalize them, then something is definitely wrong.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Since there is an objection to the amendment, I'd like to ask for those who are in favor of the Ada amendment to please raise your hand. The motion failed. I mean, the amendment failed. On the Guthers amendment, we're still on the Guthers amendment, Senator Titigui?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to place an amendment to the bill.
We are on the Guthers amendment first.
Right.
You're going to amend her amendment?
Amend her amendment, please. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And this will be on, on the same page, page five, after, on line 13. Okay, let me find it. Okay, on line 13, to put a comma after "agency head," strikeout, "and his deputy," and put in place "subject to a system of due process," comma, "until compliance is made."
Again, "subject to a system"?
"Subject to a system of due process," comma, then continuing with, "until compliance is made."
No.
And this would...
So can you go ahead?
Yeah. Madam Speaker, this would help when it comes to really finding out who is responsible for not putting this written request to the Civil Service Commission. And you yourself, as a principal, know, Madam Speaker, that when you come into a new school, the new principal that sits into office there, they have certain guidelines they want to put through. They have to make changes, even though people don't want those changes made because they like coming in late hours or deciding on where they want to sit during lunch or do whatever they want to. But principals have a big, big problem with this. And when they're not liked, it's like a conspiracy with all the other staff at that school to take that principal out. I was at a school once, my children went to M. Luhon. They had a principal there who was trying to do good. And what happened is they started a coup and voted this person out and talking to parents to get this one principal away from their school. Without any justification or reason, only because he wanted to make the school a better place for their children, a safer place, and make every employee accountable for what they do. So with this in place, we can find out what happened. And instead of going ahead and taking 10% of this good, hard-working individual's money away and the possibility of not getting good directors in positions that are needed for these agencies, these crucial agencies that we have. So by placing this in, and taking away the deputy, I mean, we're looking at one individual taking the responsibility. Why include the deputy as well? Is it because they can make more money? Taking 10% from his salary? So that's the amendment that I asked for the support of everyone here, at least to provide that system of due process in the event this does not happen. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Titegri. So the amendment would be to delete "and" his deputy and to add the word "subject to a system of due process". On the Titegri amendment, are there any speakers? Senator Rector, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sometimes I think folks aren't quite sure what, how the Civil Service Commission actually functions and what due process actually means. Look, the due process is already set out in this, right? You've got a timeline, meet it, done. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. If it doesn't get done in the timeline, that's the director, the agency head's job. The due process is they go and find out who did not do their job that they are responsible for, and then they start, go through the progressive discipline program. That's the way it works. That's why we have a system of accountability from the top to the bottom. What other due process would there be? Have the governor? Well, come on. That's, this is a checks and balance to ensure that the executive branch does his job and make sure that the executive branch directors do their job. And it marches down from the top to the bottom. I mean, realistically, at the end of the day, every agency head is responsible for everything that happens in their agency. If they don't want that responsibility or aren't willing to accept that responsibility and everything that comes with it, then they shouldn't take the job. And they shouldn't collect the salary. Right now, we have absolutely no accountability for any agency head. Zero. Voila. This puts accountability in. And it's a sard of a process that's going to make it better for everybody. And really, what it does is it ensures they do their job and make sure everybody below them do their job. I stand opposed to this amendment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. Senator Palacios, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, when you look at the entire amendment itself, already there is 20 calendar days during which time, of course, the appointing authority has to submit the notice to the Civil Service Commission. So there, he has 20 days. And then, he has another 10 days. If that is not forthcoming, then the Civil Service Commission will request for another 10 days, which will be 30 days. An appointing authority with $65,000 to $75,000 per annum, I cannot see how he cannot be responsible or be held responsible to compliance with that. You're talking about the 20 days given to him, and then 10 days, it says here, "Failure to submit the required notice of procedural action within 10 calendar days after written request by the commission."
That was amended to 15 days.
Again, and I mean, it's even giving even more latitude. So you're actually talking about a maximum 35 days before the leaving of the 10%. And that is why, at what point do we hold this $65,000 to $75,000 per annum appointing authority? At what point do we hold him accountable? And responsible for? This is minor. They just have to see it done. And we don't expect that they do it. But I'm sure that facing a 10% potential reduction, they, I'm sure they will make sure that they do it. And so, that's my remark, that I think 35 days is more than sufficient to comply with this. Because there are actions taken, Madam Speaker, especially at the hiring point, where after many, many weeks have passed, then there was a challenge on the hiring of certain individuals at exorbitant salary. And this is actually where I'm looking at this. Not so much on the adverse action kind of procedural action. So we got 35 days, the appointing authority has 35 days during which time, actually, to make sure that this gets to the Civil Service Commission. And I think that's sufficient time. And of course, to the removal of the deputy, I will make a motion to move this if the Telo Amendment fail. Because I don't think that the deputy should be included. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Rispio, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, that was also my point. It appears that the mover is trying to do two things. One, to remove the deputy, as well as establish a system of due process. So I move that, if she's okay, I move that we divide the question.
Okay. And the motion then to divide the question? No objections? So ordered? Okay. But we're going to go and continue the discussion?
So the first motion then would be, agency head, comma, then to delete "and" his deputy?
Yes. So are there any objections to deleting "and" his deputy? No objections? So ordered? Then for the replacement, is subject to a system of due process? I have Senator Ada, you still want to speak? Yes, I know. But he's still speaking. We're still calling for those to speak.
I, well, I guess on the other half of the question about that the penalty shall be, because right now, the way it reads is that, you know, upon failure to comply, there will immediately result a 10% salary reduction of the agency head. And that's assuming that, you know, the guy was just sitting on his butt, doing nothing at all. But it really assumes, presumes quite a bit as to what may be happening in that 35 days. For all we know, there, we could have just gone through a big typhoon. The director is out there, busy about, you know, trying to get services back to the community. And the last thing on his mind is, gosh, do I have all these reports? Because I'm going to get my pocketbook hit. He probably has a bigger concern to worry about. And if his subordinates are not doing the work, then obviously, he's going to come back and bite them. But otherwise, I would then support the Titegri amendment to basically subject the salary reduction to some system of due process, where, you know, it's not an automatic penalty, but rather, let's stop and look at the facts. And if, in fact, the circumstances do not warrant that penalty, then, you know, there should be some wiggle room there. But as it reads right now, regardless of what's happening, you know, that department director is going to get penalized. So I stand in support of the second part of the Titegri amendment. That's what we are talking about?
Yes.
The Titegri amendment to subject this penalty to some due process or review and not make it an automatic, no, you know, no wiggle room at all.
So the agency head will be given due process?
Some kind of review, to make sure circumstances, in fact, support is not meeting the dates.
Are there any others speaking? Anyone who would like to speak on the amendment which is subject to a system of due process? A Titegri amendment? No one? There is a question?
Actually, Madam Speaker, thank you. Actually, the question is, who would consider a claim for due process? I don't think the Civil Service Commission will consider because the Civil Service Commission would be the recipient of the potential penalty. So what body?
You would like somebody to answer your question?
Yeah, but obviously absent here. No, I'm okay with the amendment. It's that I ask myself, who is to consider and calculate whether there's due process and those things? Somebody has to do that.
Okay. I'll find you someone to respond to your question. Senator Ada, are you willing to respond?
Well, sure. In this case, maybe the beneficiary of that penalty amount should go ahead then and stand in judgment as to whether, in fact, there are circumstances that would justify the delay in submitting. You know, let them work for their money, too.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Since there is an objection to the Titegri amendment, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor of the Titegri amendment, which is subject to a system of due process, please raise your hand. Seven? Seven plus myself, eight. It passes. I gave it to you. Okay. So now we're back to the Gutherson Amendment that has been amended. So are there any speakers then? There's a, okay, one second. Senator Rispio?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Now that amendment just passed, there seems to be a disconnect because we're requiring that this be subject to a system of due process. And the director, who's being penalized, has an opportunity to express why they're delayed in providing this information and why their salary shouldn't be reduced. But who do they make that appeal to? And who approves ultimately whether or not their reasons is justified? I think, before we proceed, I'd like for this to be addressed. Because there's an obvious disconnect now that the amendment was adopted. And we're still on section E, right? Yeah?
Yes, we are. So the movers, Senator Titegri, maybe, and you can work with Senator Ada then, to connect now who then will be... Okay. So while you guys are discussing it without too much interruption. Yes. Senator, point of information, Senator Palacios?
That was exactly my question to Senator Ada. Who would hear this? Who would hear claims of mitigating circumstances? And Senator Ada verbally said that you'd be the recipient of the penalty, which is the Civil Service Commission. That's what he said. But he didn't put it in writing.
You are correct. So now they'll need to put it down in writing.
Okay, so.
Yes. Senator Rispio?
Because I have an amendment. Then, on page five, line 15, beginning in line 14, where it says, "The Civil Service Commission shall," insert the word, "develop a system of due process, period." Then, "The Civil Service Commission shall also submit a copy of its written request to the agency and his deputy for compliance with this section to last it through by the next working day." So that maybe there's some flow there now. So it's clear that it would be the Civil Service Commission who will develop a system of due process?
So it would be the Civil Service Commission shall...
Then insert the words?
Develop a system of due process and also submit a copy?
We could do that, but it's a very long sentence. It doesn't matter.
Okay. On the Rispio amendment?
Madam Speaker?
Are you going to speak on the Rispio amendment?
Yes. For consistency, we should remove "and" deputy on line 16. And also, I would suggest, if we may add to the end of Senator Rispio's amendment, just in simple language, it says, "The commission may waive the fine for just cause."
We need to take care first of the Rispio amendment because we have to, yeah, we have to figure out where we're going to put that. So the Civil Service Commission shall add the word, "Develop a system of due process" and also submit a copy of its written request to the agency?
And then if we could just also amend my amendment to delete the words "and" his deputy?
Yes, okay.
And then Senator Gutherson recommended that another, last sentence, "Commission may waive the fine for just cause." So I offer that as an amendment.
And I can write it down?
Point of order, Madam. We're getting now into a complicated wording. And so I would ask that we put this in writing so we can see it?
Okay. We're going to take a brief recess to get the amendment in writing. Back in session, Senator Rispio with your written amendment, and I hope everybody has a copy of it.
Thank you. On page five, line 15, after the word "shall," to insert the words, "Develop a system of due process," then delete "and his deputy," and then add a new sentence after the word "day," to read, "The commission may waive the fine for just cause," and I've submitted this in writing.
Thank you very much. Are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Thank you very much. Let's finish the amendment that's been amended, Senator Guthers' amendment, that's been amended. Are there any objections?
No objections.
No objections, so ordered. We will recess until tomorrow morning at 9:00. Thank you very much, and have a good day.